We will now reconvene the regular meeting of the Lompoc City Council for Tuesday, December 6, 2022. Madam Clerk, will you please call roll?
Councilmember Vega.
Here.
And Councilmember Starbuck.
Present.
Councilmember Cordova.
Here.
Mayor Potam Jeremy Ball.
Present.
Mayor Janelle Osborne.
Here. Mr. Malavi, do we have any reportable action from closed session?
Mayor and City Council met in closed session tonight to discuss the three items on the agenda: one existing litigation item, one performance evaluation item for the city manager, and one labor negotiations item for the city manager. Council discussed all those items with staff, gave direction to staff, but there was no reportable action.
Thank you. Tonight, we have Ms. Yasmin Dawson to provide our invocation, so please join us and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance after.
Good evening, all. My name is Yasmin Dawson, and I'm the president of the Islamic Center of Lompoc. A Salamulakum, which means peace be upon you. In the name of God, the most gracious, most merciful, O our Lord, we seek your blessings for this community, our mayor, and our city council. Lord, inspire our leaders to bring our diverse community together and to achieve goals through unity and action. Lord, guide them to seek direction, to lead legisively, and execute decisions that promote our health, safety, and happiness. Lord, help them serve this community, this beautiful city of Lompoc, and the citizens to the best of their ability. Lord, the people of our community have come together to launch initiatives to replace violence with peace and conflict with goodwill. O Lord God, bring together our leaders and our community to achieve these exalted goals. Amen. Greetings from the Islamic Center of Lompoc. Thank you.
I see that we have a Boy Scout troop from Vandenberg Space Force Base. I believe it's Troop 394. Would those Boy Scouts that are here like to come to the front here and help lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Please come on up. I see a few of you out there. All right, come on forward and let you guys lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please place your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. The troop is here this evening as part of earning their badge, so we will all be on our best behavior to show them how a good meeting runs, is my hope. Next is presentations. I would like to invite CJ Berry from our utility department, our Utility Director Ford, as part of the recognition of the City of Lompoc's Electric Division and supporting staff for earning the Smart Energy Provider Designation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm extremely honored to be here tonight to present this award. First, I want to begin by thanking Council for its leadership and vision, and your commitment to serving this community. That is what has enabled us to receive this prestigious award. So, why does the Smart Energy Provider Designation matter, and what does it mean? It demonstrates the city's commitment to and proficiency in supporting energy efficiency, promoting distributed generation efforts, promoting renewable energy, and engaging in environmental initiatives. Further, this national recognition is a direct result of the ongoing endeavors to incorporate energy efficiency, sustainability, affordability, communication, education, and outreach into every aspect of the business. This honor bestowed upon less, this honor is bestowed upon less than 100 of the nation's more than 2,000 public power agencies, so it really is an elite award. This represents a very small group of recipients. This true accomplishment is because of all the staff and their commitment to serving the community and the leadership of this council. With that, I thank you on behalf of the Electric Division, and Mayor, I'd like to invite you down to receive this plaque on behalf of the Council.
I just want to say congratulations. The staff that we have are amazing. The fact that we are public power, own our own power resources, and produce our own power is part of what makes uniquely Lompoc special and provides reasonable, cost-effective utilities to our community. So, thank you. Thank you for the work you do, but especially thank the staff. Otherwise, we wouldn't have this award. All right, now, we have a presentation regarding the County Broadband Consortium. And to provide the update, we have Mike Becker from SB CAG. And this is the strategic plan that we joined in with, with the county, and it's time for an update. I've seen a preview. I'm looking forward to sharing it with our community.
All right, thank you, Mayor Osborne and Council. My name's Mike Becker. I'm the Director of Planning for Santa Barbara County Association of Governments, SB CAG, and also I was tasked with being the Project Manager for the Broadband Strategic Plan project. With me today, I have Maria Kelly, who's on the project team, and also Bill Simmons, who's sitting in the back, and they're from the Broadband Consortium Pacific Coast, and they served as our contractor for this project. With that, first off, I want to thank you for having us today, and I know you've engaged with us on this topic in the past, so thank you for that as well. Before I turn it over to Maria, who's going to do the bulk of the presentation, I want to highlight how we got to where we are today. So, I think the one thing that the COVID pandemic taught us is what we have for broadband capacity and accessibility affordability in Santa Barbara County and throughout the country is not adequate. We've, it really highlighted a lot of holes with, with what we have. And then on top of that, the, both the state and the federal governments have put a lot of money behind, you know, that finishing what's been started by the private sector in terms of building out capacity to ensure that everybody's connected or has the ability to connect to broadband with reasonable speeds and also affordably. So, with the money on the table and the known need, the SB CAG Board of Directors tasked our Executive Director Margie Kern with going around to each of the cities in the county and the county government to build support to develop a broadband strategic plan. And really, what the value of the broadband strategic plan is, is to get us ready to capitalize on the available funding, to make real-world improvements that positively impact people's lives in terms of providing new access and also through affordability programs. And there's even some digital literacy aspects to this that are currently being implemented. So, SB CAG took the project on. It was assigned to me. We worked with the Broadband Consortium to do the project, and throughout the process, we, we had a very robust public process. I believe we had 12 or 13 public forums throughout the county. We had online speed test survey where we asked people to participate just so we can gauge how the broadband connectivity or the speeds are without just the providers telling us what they want us to believe they are. We conducted a needs assessment survey, and I will say, as a planner who's been involved in many, many planning projects, I've never seen the public so engaged as I have with this project. People do see the need for improvements, and they demonstrated that by showing up, taking surveys, and being part of the process. In addition to that, we had many conversations with the, the service providers that currently exist, also with Caltrans, who's been tasked with delivering some middle-mile broadband, and a variety of other regional stakeholders. And all these things kind of fed into the plan. And the plan that Maria will talk about, it identifies actions that each city can undertake. It also identifies actions that the region can undertake, potentially through SB CAG. So, finally, before I turn it over to Maria, I just want to say the next step. So, when we got this project, SB CAG is almost entirely, about 95% of our work is in the transportation space. And so, this was outside of our purview. It was new to all of us. How do we ensure that the work that we do has legs to continue beyond the planning process? And I will say that SB CAG partnered with the County of Santa Barbara to seek funding from the California Public Utilities Commission, which would enable SB CAG to stand up, to staff up, to be, actually begin implementing the recommendations from this plan, and to begin coordinating with the internet service providers to actually realize improvements. We do expect to receive that funding, which would enable SB CAG to stand something up and likely in the spring timeframe. And how that would work is, you have cities such as Lompoc that actually have already done quite a bit of work in this space and have staff that, that works with broadband, so SB CAG could help coordinate their efforts with others. Or you have smaller cities such as Guadalupe, where SB CAG may be tasked with doing all the work. But just to know that this is a plan that is not going to die when it's adopted by the SB CAG Board next week, that we fully expect that SB CAG to be able to start implementing it. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Maria, and she has a presentation for you.
I have notes, just in case you have questions. Thank you so much for having us again tonight. We've been in Guadalupe, or sorry, phew, my apologies, Lompoc three times. We were here in March, and we did a public forum in May, and it's, we're happy to be back this evening. So, just high-level outline, I'm just going to cover a little bit of the timeline, the status, highlights, actions, regional actions, and next steps. Because again, like Mike said, with the plan, you want to implement it. So, this was the timeline. It was a very fast timeline. I didn't add December, just because I forgot. I think I just want to admit. But the plan has been completed. It's at print, and you will all receive a copy of the printed copy. And it's now, we just emailed the digital version to SB CAG to post and share with the MOU partners. So, a very quick timeline, but a great start. So, project highlights, again, we wanted to align it with the state and federal efforts in regards to what their identification of funding. We developed an open-access GIS mapping tool to really collectively be able to look at the region, add additional layers as needed. It's a true planning and resource tool for everyone, for all the planners, agencies in the county. Captured community status by community, which was really important. There are still some communities we'd like to have more data from, ongoing, as we look at digital equity and inclusion, but we, good baseline. And at the end of the day, everybody wants reliable, affordable broadband. That's, that was the premier, the premier outcome. Sorry. And definitely, I want to highlight and really call out how amazing Lompoc is as regards to being prepared. There really weren't any gaps in policies or issues. It was really truly, when you look at the plan, it was green, 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 all the way down. Your commitment to broadband and broadband development is paying off, and it will help moving forward. And we can see that with some investments already being made in the community. So, what we did is we took the stakeholders, we took the data, and we took the mapping, and we just basically ran it through, and that's how we got our, how we came through with the recommendations and how we got to the priorities identified for Lompoc and the region. So, this is a little look at the summary of the speed test data. This was about 76. You can't really tell, but there's 76 dots. We would love to have more speed testing as we, ongoing, to continue to do some data analysis. This is an overlay of the CPUC. So, you see the CPUC map that says most of the area is green, meaning it's accessible. But when you actually look at the dots on the map, it shows that those red dots are showing that's still an underserved part of the population in regards to either quality or reliability. But that's based on speed, so you can still see that within that city, within the city footprint, we're still seeing some low-service availability. Again, broadband-for-all, looking at this project through the lens of broadband-for-all and the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, they're looking to planning speeds of 100 megabits download and 20 up. So, you can see that some of the service within the city, or significant majority of the data we have from within the city, is still below that threshold. So, there's still an opportunity to increase. So, that's just a snapshot of the data. Again, we're still collecting data off the BCPC website. So, recommended local actions. This is unique for Lompoc. These are some of the actions that we think are important. And again, because a lot of your priorities in planning have already been in place, when you look down to the far right under redundancy and resiliency, we start to look at what are things that you might be able to do to update your current infrastructure, city-owned infrastructure, as well as potentially look at additional policies and planning around smart cities. This infrastructure, broadband infrastructure is really the future of being able to deploy policies around smart city growth or smart city planning. And so, that's, that's a little, that's very unique to Lompoc and Goleta. So, actions organized. Consider adopting the strategy once you've had an opportunity to review it and ask questions. Adopt it by your council and start, you know, continuing to work regionally and work with SB CAG and implement the, the plan locally and regionally. In regards to, again, broadband-for-all access, affordability, and adoption, or all parts of these components of broadband-for-all, participating in that open access, the GI, Golden State Connect Authority, middle-mile conversation, it's important for all of our cities to be engaged in that conversation, that the state is developing a very robust middle-mile network. And it's important that we're engaged, everyone's engaged with a representative from each of the cities in that conversation. Potentially engaging with telecoms as they are coming through. We do know that there's fiber deployment happening right now, and finding out if there's any opportunities to support your current infrastructure to either, again, upgrade, or if there's a way to integrate it into more of a community, making sure that your institutions are connected. I remember when we were at the adult school doing our outreach, we didn't have any access to Wi-Fi. It'd be great to have Wi-Fi throughout the adult school. And so, just one of those things to be looking at as you're looking at partners, community partners, making sure that these types of things are addressed around it, because that has to do with then affordability and adoption. Sometimes, public access to Wi-Fi is the only way that certain people in our communities can connect, and it's important. And we, your library does a fantastic job with Chromebooks and hotspot checkouts. But again, being aware of making sure that there's a way that should this council choose and this community choose to really support that connectivity. And support the grant work. And then, as time goes on, and next year, you'll hear more from more digital equity and inclusion work with the SB Foundation coordinating a digital inclusion, a digital equity coalition, and really looking for partnerships. And again, big kudos to Lompoc. We've had some absolutely fantastic partnerships already with Affordable Connectivity Program outreach through social services, as well as your staff. So, just some, some things for consideration and noticing that, you know, you lead the policy conversations and sort of the, what actions you want to take, and making sure that those conversations move forward. From our regional actions, this is what we were sharing with all of the cities. The Greens have been, you know, implemented. And the Yellows are what we're looking at as far as like pending the LADA grant funding. That's the local agency technical assistant grant funding that Mike mentioned. And looking to see where, you can see where SB CAG can really provide some coordination, where staffing capacity may potentially be an issue, but also continue to plan regionally because borders, broadband doesn't recognize really jurisdictional boundaries. It's, it goes everywhere it wants to go. So, coordination is really, really helpful. So, next action, next steps for your council to consideration, probably not later this year because we're at, almost at the end, but adopt the, some of the strategy recommendations. That probably would move to Q1. And then identify, can identify either the current staff who's been participating with us in this project, or identify, make sure we still have a staff to connect with SB CAG as the Golden State Connect conversations are happening, and those are happening right now, and will continue to happen into the first quarter, potentially second quarter of next year. Some of the recommendations may not prove to be feasible to your council. It may not be something that you want to consider. Want to talk to staff. So, determining what recommendations, there's not a lot, but there's a handful of recommendations, determining which actions you would want to support and participate in. And overall, just keep tracking throughout the year, sort of just little bits of pieces around the policy engagement, taking a look at it. Because these are ways to even, if we can't even fully implement at the regional level as quickly, you can still take action at the local level and make sure that the conversation is still happening. So, just determine, making sure that by the end of next year, you've determined your priorities and a pathway, and figuring out how to make sure it's a part of everything you do, specifically around digital equity. There's a lot of opportunities for Lompoc in those partnerships of access and affordability. And I believe that's it. Happy to answer any questions.
Before you turn the screen off, if you would go back to the speed test summary map? So, for clarity.
Yes.
The big coverages of big blankets are red, big blankets are green and yellow, that's the information from the providers.
That is a great question. I'm so glad you asked. This is the current CPUC map of self-report or data from the CPUC, correct?
And then the dots that you see are the individuals, residents, companies, whoever was, that actually took the speed test.
Correct.
That disproved what supposedly is the CPUC's understanding of what's being delivered.
It's a challenge. And what's happening right now, and the benefits, this ties greatly into the GIS mapping, we can change this layer as soon as we get the updated data, either from the FCC or the, well, and the CPUC. There's processes in place right now because these maps are being challenged, because they are reports. Some of them are still based on census block service, or they're reported in another way. And, and you can, you can never take that speed test too many times from your laptop, because different time of day can impact it. But we can see on those sets, and I could go back and look at time of day, you have a lot of red. And so, it would be helpful. Yes.
Because the test, the speed test is still up.
Yes.
Still on the site.
Yep.
If we push the site out, it'd be very helpful if residents and businesses in our community took this test to help provide additional feedback to challenge these maps.
Continue to take the test, yes. And there's a federal map challenge happening right now. I'm not sure, we, we haven't addressed that, and I'm not sure if you want to, but that, that federal challenge closes on the 13th. There will be some additional, but it does help provide data. The speed testing will always help provide data in identifying gaps and opportunities.
And the final part of that, that will then help us be able to apply for and obtain additional grants, whether through the city or through partners, to expand our affordability and availability of broadband and provide additional competition potentially than what's out there.
That's, that is the plan of why, yes, that is why the work was done. Some of the funding is daylighting at the end of this year. You'll see in the strategy, but some of the funding will be redeveloped for next year. So, it's, it's going to be, again, why it's important to maintain the ongoing conversation is watching the, the federal funding that will come out for the states that will trickle down to communities. This data is what helps us justify why we think the state should continue to invest in our region.
Thank you very much for those additional clarities. I think it was just really important that our community hear why it was important for us to participate, why this is ongoing and not a single document that just stops, that it's a live document and continues to provide, provide us feedback and information to help us move forward in improving service for, for all of us. So, does anybody else have any questions? Councilmember Ball?
Just a couple of quick ones. First of all, just want to say thank you specifically to the mayor. I remember before she was on council, Councilwoman Cordova, I remember this conversation about broadband coming before the lowly little Economic Development Committee. So, thank you to the mayor for keeping her focus on this and making sure the city's lining up behind that. Something I was just curious, two things real quickly, is just a little elaboration on digital equity. That's a new term.
Yes.
So, obviously, I'm curious from the perspective of how Lompoc might stack up in the region versus some of our neighbors. Obviously, this is a county push, but there are some, some needs specific to Lompoc, so.
So, digital equity has been, I did, there's, it's actually codified in the broadband plan. You'll see it under the glossary of terms, and it is actually been codified in the Investment, Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, as well as at the state level. And it's basically everybody's, every single person's ability to participate in a digital, whether for work, school, you know, to fully, to, to participate in a social fabric. We are realizing that being able to access the internet and the digital world is required for our quality of life, and so, digital equity has a very clear definition. So, what we see here and what we've heard, where there's opportunity is in affordability, affordability opportunity. And then, I did actually bring my, my notes from our outreach summary and some of the conversations. So, access to online training, so making sure that community members know how to use the internet once they have it. So, adoption is going to be an issue for Lompoc as well. We, even though while we do see access in and around Lompoc, what we heard from the community is that not everyone knows how to access it. So, training is, training is a piece of that broadband-for-all to close the digital divide, to achieve digital equity.
Thank you. And then just take a stab at this, if you would. Obviously, there's a lot of moving pieces, different parts of the region. The state and the feds are trying to figure out how to spend the money and get it all to work. What, how do you measure success in three to five years? If everything was to work out, how are you guys saying, "We did it"? What does that look like?
So, with the, with the infrastructure funding from the feds, the state basically has, I think, five years to build a digital equity plan for that funding, to then implement digital equity work. Success to me is that Santa Barbara County and Lompoc and our communities have had the opportunity to speak to it, participate, and that our voice has been heard in that plan and that plan implementation. I think that's one definite piece of identifying success.
Thank you for that. I hope that Lompoc continues to be very proactive, and that when this is all hopefully finished up, that we're at the leading edge of broadband for our community. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any other questions? All right. Well, we look forward to the full document and revisiting it in the spring to adopt it and implement it into our community. Thank you for the work.
Thank you so much for your time.
All right. City manager report. Mr. Albro?
Thank you. I really wanted to thank all the staff that helped put together the parade this Saturday. Mayor, council members, and everybody that showed up. It was really great to see the community come together. I really wanted to thank Parks and Rec for coordinating that with police, Public Works, even the utilities. There's so many things that go on. It was great to see such a good job that they did, and I wanted to thank them for that. Also, want to let everybody know that the Charlotte's Web Bookmobile is partnering with the Lompoc Community Garden to hold its first-ever sidewalk story in the garden. That'll be this Saturday, the 10th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Also, wanted to announce that the Parks and Rec Division is accepting registration, registrations for the Winter Wonder Camp. This is for kindergarten through sixth grade. It's a good thing for our kids to do while they're on break to keep you from driving you crazy. And also, as a reminder, we're still doing the light exchange, so if you want to bring in your old condensate lighting and get LEDs. And we're still doing raffles and for yard art, so. And we're still doing raffles and for yard art, so that'll be going on until January 27. That's all I have, thank you.
Any questions? All right, we will now move on to consent calendar. We will be pulling item four because the county did not certify the election. So item four will be pulled, and as a result, there will be no oath of allegiance and seating of newly elected members or recess for this meeting. If you would like to speak to items one through three on the consent calendar, you may come forward to the podium, or you may call in at 805-875-8201. Were there any written comments on items one, two, three?
No ma'am, nothing.
Thank you. While we wait to see if there are any calls at 805-875-8201, I will read the process for consent calendar. All items listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the council vote. Any items withdrawn from the consent calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communication near the end of the meeting. Seeing no one rise or call in, and we have no written comment on cons, oh, before I speak too quickly.
All items listed under consent calendar.
Good evening. Can you please turn off the recording in the background or turn it down?
There will be no separate.
It is off.
Thank you. You're live in the council meeting. You have, you have three minutes to give your comment, please go ahead.
Hello, I just wanted to thank everybody for the work on the broadband that you're doing. I was wondering if you could again give the address for the, for the speed test that we, you want us to take. I'd be happy to do that a bunch of times, but I need an address. Thank you for your service, bye-bye.
We will make sure and post that and reshare that from our social media and our Facebook page. And if I get it before the end of the meeting, I will announce it at the end of the meeting. Seeing no other phone calls or comments on consent calendar, we will close public comment and bring it back to council for a motion on items one, two, three, or any pull. Councilmember Vega?
I'll make a motion that we accept consent calendar.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll second.
And Councilmember Ball seconded that. Any questions? Seeing none, let's vote. All right, one through three passes 5-0. And as mentioned, we will not be having an election presentation, so no break at the moment. We will move on to staff presentations, announcements, and requests. I have the Planning Manager, Brian Halverson, to provide an update on the City of Lompoc's housing element and Technical General Plan update.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council and, and the audience. I'm going to give a, a quick introduction to this presentation, and then our consultant, RingCon consultants, environmental consultants, are going to do the rest of the presentation, and then I'll chime in towards the end. The purpose of this presentation tonight is to bring the council update on the efforts that we've been doing on the housing element. We've been working on this for about eight months, and the same presentation this evening was also given to the Planning Commission last month. So their comments will also be discussed in the slideshow. And lastly, we'll provide a timeline for some of the elements that we're updating. It's, tonight's presentation is mostly on the housing element, but we are also updating other elements like the circulation element, the safety element, and then also adding a new element to our general plan called the Environmental Justice Element. With that in mind, Ryan Russell is here this evening. He's going to go ahead and lead us in this presentation, and then I'll circle back at the end.
Good evening, council members. My name's Ryan, and I'm with RingCon Consultants. So the, the focus of this meeting regards to the housing element. It's going to focus on the site inventory piece. So as you can see here, the site inventory is just one component of the housing element. The housing element also has a needs and constraints assessment, the sites inventory, which we're going to focus on tonight, a fair housing analysis, and the policy and programs piece of the element. So the site inventory is a required component, and it's really something the state focuses on when they review the housing element. It's used to show that the city, to identify sites to meet the city's regional housing needs allocation, or RENA. And what RENA is, it's the number of units by income level that the city has been allocated by SB CAG. So the state gives SB CAG a number of units. They go through their own methodology and allocates RENA allocation to the various jurisdictions in the area, and that basically restarts the eight-year cycle. So we're preparing the housing element for the sixth cycle, which runs from February 2023 through 2031. As you may know, the city got a RENA allocation of about 2,200 units, and those are split up between income levels, so about 166 very low, 262 low, 311 moderate, and about 1,500 above moderate. And for the sixth cycle, we also need to plan for a 20% buffer, and that's required by SB 166. And HCD guidance really says that buffer should focus on the lower and moderate income unit category, so we didn't include a buffer for the above moderate. So the site inventory will need to plan for about 2,400 units. So how can the site inventory show that the city can meet this regional housing needs allocation? So first, we look at existing projects going through the process in the city that have housing units. So it's going to be going through the planning review or the building review process, and we can use those units to count towards the RENA, towards the site inventory. We also can look at accessory dwelling unit trends and project those out over the next eight years. We can then look at city-owned sites or sites that property owners have expressed interest to, to build housing on those sites. Then we can look and identify specific sites that allow housing that are either vacant or non-vacant with redevelopment potential. And then if necessary, identify sites to rezone, to either allow residential uses or allow them at a higher density. That's kind of the, the process that typical jurisdictions go through. There's also some other considerations to take into consideration when identifying sites, looking at environmental constraints, if there's any flooding, steep slopes, or other factors that'll prohibit housing on those sites. Looking at redevelopment trends in the city to make sure sites are consistent with trends in the city. And if trends aren't seen, implementing incentives as part of programs in the housing element. And then a new, a new policy for the sixth cycle. We need to make sure we're considering fair housing when we're identifying sites, so not concentrating lower-income housing units in a certain portion of the city. And then finally, for lower-income sites, they need to meet certain density and size requirements as required by state law. So for Lompoc, they need to be at least 20 units an acre or more, have a, have a default density of that. And they need to be greater than half an acre or less than 10 acres. So when we went through and identified sites for the inventory, these are some of the characteristics we looked at. First, we looked for vacant sites that allowed for residential uses. We also wanted to avoid sites with existing housing units on them, and that's to prevent displacement issues. And also, if a site has, for example, six existing housing units, whereas 10 would be allowed under rezoning, that's really a net increase of four. So we tried to avoid sites with existing housing units. We then looked for sites that were considered underutilized, and how we determined if sites were underutilized would be if they had large parking areas, additional build-out potential for sites along the commercial corridors, if they have a low floor area ratio, which basically means if there's a single-story structure where there could be three stories allowed. We also considered the redevelopment potential. So we looked at, for example, if, if there's a single-family home in a multifamily lot, that would be a site that has redevelopment potential. Also looking at the land value compared to the built value on the site. And then I'll go over this in a couple more slides, but if the city hasn't seen trends for redevelopment of certain sites, they would need to implement incentives as a program, and I'll go over that in just a few slides. So this is a summary of the draft site inventory. And when that, when it's back up, you'll see on the, the bottom the fact that the draft inventory has identified enough sites to meet the city's regional housing need allocation without requiring any rezoning. So the trends in the city for accessory dwelling units, about eight units a year have been permitted, so extending that out about 66 units, we can assume. There's about 638 pending and approved projects, and I, I believe there are a couple more projects we could add to that list. But for, so that would increase that number and reduce the number of sites we would identify as underutilized, but that would, that would improve, improve the inventory. And then we identified underutilized sites to accommodate about 1,700 units. So it's hard to see on this map, and I believe we have it pulled up on the desktop if we want to zoom in at a later point, but this, this map shows the location of the identified sites. A lot of them are concentrated in the center area of the city and along some of the corridors. And really, that's because a lot of the other areas of the city are low-density, single-family zoning with existing single-family houses. So those sites really wouldn't be feasible to include in the inventory. And then just some considerations for including sites in the inventory. Including a site in the inventory doesn't require that they're built with housing. It simply demonstrates that the city has adequate land and zoning to meet its housing need. For some sites where there's not redevelopment potential going on, for sites that have, for instance, existing uses or structures, programs in the element would be implemented to add, update the zoning code to add incentives to facilitate redevelopment of those sites. So, and I'll go over that right now, so some considerations, like I was just talking about incentives. So this just shows some example incentives. And what the housing element would have would be a program that says the city will implement these incentives by a certain date. The housing element itself isn't implementing any specific incentives. That's really something that the city will collaborate and figure out which incentives are the most feasible for the city to implement. But some examples would be allowing increases in height or density, decreases in setbacks, that sort of thing. Also streamlining the process, whether that's making the process go quicker or having a ministerial review process. Whichever incentives the city thinks would be most feasible to encourage redevelopment of certain sites, specifically sites along the commercial corridors. So missing, a missing middle overlay, this isn't required by the site inventory or the housing element. It's just something for the city to consider. But essentially, this would allow duplexes or triplexes in single-family neighborhoods. However, the, the building footprint and the, the size of the structure would be similar to single-family characteristics. So those, so a triplex would integrate into these single-family neighborhoods. And this would allow for greater potential for housing to be developed in some of these existing neighborhoods. This is just something for, for you to consider and give direction on if you would like. And then I wanted to touch on the Bailey Avenue Sphere of Influence. As you know, the city has an application in with LAFCO to extend the sphere of influence to certain portions of Bailey Avenue. As part of the housing element for policies and programs, we can, you know, direct the city to encourage and make sure that these, that this application is moving forward and that housing on these, in these areas are, you know, pushed forward into the future. During Workshop One, these sites were identified as good locations for housing. As part of the site inventory piece of the housing element, however, we can't identify these as sites because they're not officially a part of the, the city's, in the city limits. But like I said, there can be policies in the housing element that push the city to, to make sure that housing is developed in these locations. This is just a summary of some of the, the comments from the Planning Commission hearing on, in November. They wanted clarifications on whether the buffer as part of the RENA allocation applied to above moderate. Like I said, HCD guidance said that buffer is only really required for lower and moderate income. They wanted to make sure that the goals and policies in the, the element is, are updated to make sure there's no relevant, irrelevant information in them and make sure they're up to date with current state guidance. They had a recommendation that the updated circulation element consider impacts of traffic related to the proposed pale-blue-dot space center proposal. And they also recommended looking at larger areas to consider for future annexation. So now I'm going to go over some next steps for the housing element and some of the general plan technical updates. We're aiming to get a draft housing element complete at the end of the month, and then it will be available for public review and some hearings in January. We'll then submit the housing element to the state for their 90-day review, and we will revise the element based off of any comments that we receive from them around March, and then come back here for adoption hearings around March or April. And related to the March or April adoption hearings, that would be past the statutory deadline of February, which the city has, and all cities in the region have a February deadline. I'll note that most of the cities in the region are in the same schedule as, as Lompoc is. We are submitting the draft to the state in January, so that's before the deadline. So the state will know that the city is making meaningful actions towards updating their housing element. Some considerations about not having an adopted housing element. I believe the builder's remedy has been in the news lately, specifically related to some of the Bay Area governments. What the builder's remedy does is it prevents the city from denying a project that doesn't comply with zoning or other regulations if they come with a project with 20% very low income or 100% moderate income. But that said, these projects are still subject to, are not subject to ministerial review, so you'll still have the chance to, it'll go through the discretionary review process. It also will be subject to SEQA, so a lot of these projects, if they come through, would be subject to an EIR. This, this law has been around since 2000. There really hasn't been many projects that come through with builder's remedy. About half of this, the jurisdictions in the SCAG region do not have a certified housing element. We're not seeing any, many projects come through with the builder's remedy. So there's really a lot of legal uncertainty about these projects, so developers really aren't moving forward with utilizing the builder's remedy. So I don't think it's an issue to be super concerned about in Lompoc. But that said, that is something to, to take into consideration, and I wanted to, to note that. Some next steps related to the general plan technical updates. We are updating the circulation element, also the safety element, and technical edits to some of the other elements. So the circulation and safety element, we're aiming to get drafts out early next year as well as the other technical updates. And then like Brian said, there's going to be a new environmental justice element as required by state law, and that's going to look at identifying goals and policies to address inequity in the city. And some of the topics would be reduction in air pollution exposure to certain populations, access to food, employment, and various opportunities, safe housing, and access to public facilities. And we're aiming to have public workshops related to the environmental justice element early next year, which is in around a month. And with that, I think I'll turn it back over to Brian to wrap up.
Thank you. I just want to encourage the public as well as let the council know that, you know, we have a website that has all of the documents, you know, outcomes of the public workshops and how to get on the email list so that the public can be up to date on next steps and where we at, where we're at in the process. I'm the project manager and as well as Brent- I'm the project manager, and as well as Brent Gibbons is with mid-year harness, and of course Ryan Russell as well. Other than that, that concludes the presentation. I'd like to open it up for any questions that the council may have on any of the slides or the information we presented tonight.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Hi, Brian. Just a couple of questions, and you covered some of what I was going to ask, but the state basically is dictating what we can, we can't control certain zoning now, they've overridden our zoning code basically, haven't they?
If you're talking about some of the new state housing laws, I would totally agree. For example, we're going to be required, although there'll be a lot of conditions, to allow residential and commercial zones. So, and then of course, you know, about ADUs, they're trying to streamline, or they have and streamlined process for ADUs, and so yeah, the bills just keep coming out and coming out to...
So I guess what this would lead to is, if we have a, a large lot on the south side, we could use an ADU in there as arena number then, couldn't we? We could go in and look at every lot in Long Poak and say, oh, well, the possibility of somebody building an ADU here would, we, we, could we do that?
So we are ready, basically, and Ryan can add to this discussion, but basically, we have to demonstrate, demonstrate what the trends are for ADUs. Some areas have built a lot of ADUs, we're only averaging about eight a year, which is really, really low number. Obviously, larger cities...
Right, but that was because of the restrictions on building an ADU now with the override and the encouragement of it. And by, you know, we're looking at using infill numbers here with vacant lots in town that people don't want to sell or don't want to develop, but we're, we're reporting them as available.
Right, but it, it still isn't going to make a huge difference because at the end of the day, you have to prove based on a trend how many you're actually issuing or building, and so even if you assume the whole south side was going to have an ADU, they actually have to come in and apply for a building permit, and we have to see those trends on paper. Right now, it's only about eight, like Ryan said, and so we're going to tell HCD that we can do sixty-six ADUs over an eight-year time span. So it's really not that much considering we have to plan for almost twenty-four hundred units.
So when we report these numbers then, we're going to use housing that's already approved?
No, we're only just planning for it as far as zoning the land and having the density, the general plan density in place so that if a builder comes in, they can build that housing at that density, and we can guarantee these numbers that you see on the screen here, and then also the approved projects.
So the approved projects aren't being used on the RENA numbers then?
Yeah, on this screen, it shows the approved and pending projects, which we do have six hundred and thirty-eight. Some of those projects have been on the books for a very, very long time though.
Right. So I guess the big thing is, we can't, can we use the RENA numbers to leverage for annexation?
My understanding, no, we can put policies in our general plan, but as far as leverage, we don't even have an annexation application in yet, we only have the sphere, and so HCD is, is not going to most likely say, hey, you can count those numbers because we don't have control of those areas at all, still in the county. So, once we do have control, we can say, hey, we're going to have this land, and we have this land zone and general plan destination at a certain density, and then we can count it, but right now, it's, it's, we can't do it.
Okay, well...
We'd like to, but we're going to...
Thought I'd ask.
Yeah.
One, this kind of question just off, from my own personal, what is our density in Long Poak compared to other cities in the area?
I, Councilmember Starbuck, I do not have those numbers right now, I know that we have looked at them before, and it's pretty high. Certain areas of town are going to be a lot higher.
You've worked with other cities in the area, is, it's something that you've, any knowledge of that, or?
I think with, with comparison to the, the amount of, of development in the certain area, Long Poak is a dense city, yeah.
Very?
I don't know about very dense, but...
Very, very?
And then related to the ADUs, if, if the city is permitting more than eight a year, those will be counted towards the city's RENA allocation, so this is just as part of the planning over the next eight years. But if the city is seeing more accessory dwelling units and the Bailey Avenue sphere of influence moves quicker and housing is built there, those, all of those units, assuming they're within the city, can be counted towards meeting the city's RENA allocation.
Councilmember Roll.
Thank you, a couple of quick ones. So just, just clarity, in terms of the state requiring us to have to meet their threshold expectation of RENA numbers, you've shown here that the Bailey Avenue corridor does not need to be included for us to hit those required numbers, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Awesome, thank you. And then the second question has to do, and this is maybe more long-term, but several of the, you know, the inventory sites, you know, that took inventory of, a lot of those are in downtown, and I know over the years, there's, there's either been overlays or discussions on incentives, not necessarily something you can answer now, but maybe you can speak to reminding us some of those incentives that we might consider or other places have considered to, instead of just going through the motion to check the box that actually does incentivize people to move on projects?
Yeah, I mean, I think one of the major incentives for developers to redevelop is streamlining the process, making the process go quicker, whether that's ministerial review or that sort of thing. Other incentives could be increasing density, so allowing more housing units on, on each of these sites, decreasing development standards, and that sort of thing to, to make, making the projects pencil out a little bit better.
Thank you for that, I look forward to learning more.
So in communities that have put in some of these incentives of higher density or streamlining, has it actually seen more building happen? Because you can put all of these things in place, and as you said, if it doesn't pencil out, no matter how many incentives you have, it doesn't necessarily guarantee that these numbers will appear.
Right. Yeah, I think it depends on the jurisdictions as well, and I think coordinating with economic development would be an important strategy as well to, to get, you know, economic drivers moving into the city and developers wanting to utilize those incentives would be an important strategy too.
And even though we have RENA numbers and they're what the state expects, what if our local market says those aren't the type of houses we want, and as a result, the builders aren't building those houses? So we're going to miss our RENA numbers because the local market is demanding X when we've put rules in place that encourage you to develop a different type of housing than what the market's asking for.
Right, yeah, I think it's unclear of what, what the state is going to do, you know, down the road with, with all of these new housing laws, and they're really going to be paying attention to the annual progress reports to seeing what is being done, and I think the mid-year cycle review, they're going to really, if the city isn't meeting their, their expectations, they're going to want to see, you know, different policies and programs to make sure you're trying to meet the RENA allocation.
Any more questions? Councilmember Starbuck.
It's great that we get to talk about the housing element, and we really have to approve it with no control on it, but what about the technical general plan update? What is that referring to in here? I know that there, we had talked very briefly about a new element and safety and circulation here, is that what we're referring to as the technical general plan update?
That's correct. So we definitely, as laws change, we have to go in and kind of do surgery on the general plan, for example, the safety element. So right now, we have new evacuation routes, it's just an example, that our current safety element does not address, so we have to go in there and make those changes, so that's one of them. Already talked about the environmental justice. Circulation element is another one. We, Public Works Department did a bicycle and pedestrian plan a couple years ago, and then just last July, we got the multimodal improvement plan approved, so those documents need to be brought up to current circulation element to make sure they're consistent, so we're going to come back with that as well. And then, of course, the ad hoc committee I keep mentioning because those comments are going to be considered and acted upon when we get to the draft of those elements.
I, I guess one other question, Ryan, and we talked very briefly about it before, is what would it take for us in the next year, two years, to extend our general plan from 2030 to 2040, or whatever we can take it out to, so that we don't get up to, up against the wall and have to spend millions of dollars again to do it, but we can do it in what I'll call the hundred thousand dollar bites? When, what, what would trigger us to be able to take the general plan out to 2040 now?
Yeah, well certainly, we spent a billion dollars on updating the 2030 general plan, so we don't need to do that anytime soon.
But that plan, mind you, you know, just for knowledge, that was because that plan had not...
Very old.
It was twenty years to do it.
Yeah.
And it was a huge undertaking at that time, where now we have one, we're remaining current on it, we're bringing in the required elements, we're updating it, you know, as we are needed, why can't we take it out to 2040 now?
So generally, based on what OPR says, Office of Planning and Research, they say that the general plan should usually have a life of about twenty years. So we still have time, we don't need to worry about updating our general plan, I would say, for at least another five years, especially since we're going in and we're updating the housing element, the circulation element, the safety element, environmental justice, so we're hitting a lot of those, and it sounds like what I'm hearing from the council is that economic development isn't going to be touched anytime soon, so we're looking pretty good. We shouldn't have to be spending a lot more money on doing like a 2050 plan or 2040, so I would suggest that we just make sure that, and I think the attorney's office would agree, is new laws are implemented, we have to go in and change those elements to meet those new legal requirements. So hopefully that answers your question, I mean...
It kind of does, but, you know, not going into a big debate on a staff presentation, but it, if we're so close and we're there, why not?
Yeah, and I, like I said, I think we have at least another five, maybe more, before we even need to be talking about a wholesale comprehensive amendment. We just did a zoning code amendments, we're not looking at getting into more costs for our general plan, we just want to make sure it's legally defensible.
I love that word, legally defensible.
And last thing, sorry, I know this presentation's going a little long, but we also are working on the permit-ready ADU program, and so we're like really high ranking right now on that, and most likely that program's going to get funded, and that will help also to build more housing in Long Poak. And those trends, I know if we have that program in place in the next year, that trend is going to go up a lot for ADUs, because it's going to be plans that the, the public can select, and they can build an ADU, and they're going to save costs and time to build those ADUs as opposed to hiring someone to do those plans, they're already pre-approved plans, so I'm excited about that program.
Councilmember Cordova.
Just to touch a little bit on what Councilmember Starbuck just said with regards to the general plan, I, I do agree, and I think that, that, I know that's not the conversation today, but I just wanted to say that I do agree, I think that it, it took us so long to even get there, and I think planning for it or waiting for the five to seven years or making it just legally defensible, I at some point in time would want to believe that we want our general plan to be depictive of the actual vision and perceived growth that we want in this community and not just legally defensible, but that we actually work at it prior to that and chip away at it so that when it, so that when we can bring up that new plan, we actually have something that is way more complete rather than, than the way we had to do it this time, which was, you know, in, in chunks, and it ended up being more costly rather than if we just update. So I, I'm with Councilmember Starbuck on this one.
Councilmember Ball.
No, I was just, I wasn't nodding off, but just for a second, I was just kind of thinking, and then something struck me, and I got really excited because it sounds like that the city is excited, you just mentioned at the end, you're going to streamline a process to make something easier at the city, well, that woke me up immediately, so I just want to encourage, encourage everyone and the city. Again, our, our job here at the city is to try to make processes as easy as possible for those that have good ideas and are trying to abide by the rules to get stuff done, and part of economic development is having processes easier at the city level, so I want to commend you on that, and I look for many other opportunities where the city can streamline things as well.
There was other staff members that worked on the grant, and I'm excited because we were ranked number one for the planning projects that were submitted. We beat out the University of California, Santa Barbara, we beat out the county, so the fact that we're right at the top there, number one on the planning projects, I, I think we're going to get that funding, so. Any more questions, or?
I don't see any more questions. Oh, well then, turn your light on, Victor.
It is on now.
All right.
Brian, you know, we're talking about housing, but we're, I'd like to talk a little bit about the other housing, the other elements of the general plan. We always talk about annexation, extending our sphere of influence, urban limit line, and actually, our general plan seemed like it's geared against any of that growth, and I'm just wondering as far as the laws pertaining to general plan amendments and adjusting the elements, if some of those are, are cha, are easily changed, or can they be changed, or can we kind of alter it? Because Councilwoman Cordova said also, she said, we're, we're not really looking far enough into the future to, for our own city's vision because the concerns of the, the LAFCO and the sphere of influence is, is, is the county concern, but we're not really taking care of ourselves in many instances, okay? So sometimes we, we make rules, we input them into the general plan, and, and they're really going against what we're trying to do. When we want to expand and we get disappointed that we're turned down, it's our own general plan that seems like it's in place that helps facilitate the turn down, or, or them to say no. Maybe you could just maybe touch on that a little bit?
Yeah, real quickly touch on that, so that's what we're going to do, we're going to go into the general plan and, you know, bring it to the public and find out as well is what's the vision. So obviously, Long Poak wants to grow, and that's good. As far as our policies, our general plan preventing the expansion, I kind of agree, but I kind of don't, just because we're dealing with the county that is recommending that we don't grow in those areas, and then we're dealing with LAFCO. But what we can do is there are things in our general plan that will allow, if we change it, which we have those ad hoc comments, will allow more of a pro-growth vision for Long Poak, so I think that's what we're, we're charged at doing is, you know, presenting that to the community and drafting up changes to those elements that seem to be like we're holding back growth. So there are things that are going to be difficult, but we're, we're jumping in and working on that, and that's part of the, the comments that we received from the ad hoc committee, but it's a, a hard environment sometimes working with certain groups that don't want Long Poak to grow, so.
Yeah, and it seems like, in closing here, I just think that the fact that we have an element that says we have to notify the people that are actually against us and against growth, it seems to be non-conducive to us growing, you know what I mean? It's kind of like letting all your enemies know that, hey, guess what, we want to do this, and they always say no. They never compromise, they never even have a, any kind of a, of some, coming to the table, you know, and helping us negotiate because they know it's for the better of the people, it's always about something else, okay? We're here defending people and for people that live here for our growth, our growth pattern, our economic balance, yet we have RENA numbers that actually tell us that we have to increase the density going up because we can't go out, okay? And that's actually what's happening here because we're being told we have to go up because the single-family homes are starting to be where it's more of a rarity someday because we don't have the envelope here, because with RENA numbers, we, our population growth hasn't changed much. We're getting houses, but, housing, but it has nothing to do with population, I gather, so.
I understand. And when they did the update of the 2030 general plan, the same topic came up, and so RENCON actually worked on that, and we looked at certain areas of town to grow, like the Bailey area, Miguelito Canyon and other areas. So it has been on the table for a long time, and it was studied and put into the land use element, so that, that's been on the table for a while, so now it's a matter of going in and looking at the, the goals and the policies to make sure that they are consistent with that vision.
Thank you, I just want to, just reiterate that our vision should be stronger for us to know what we want to do. What happens is, we get the short end because we don't know what we want to be and where we want to grow, so we have a foresight, we have a, a, a general plan that says for twenty years, but we don't even know what we want in twenty years, so we're just agreeing with a twenty-year plan. So we need to be stronger at, at being decision-makers here. That includes myself, thank you.
Mr. Starbuck.
Not going too far off a subject matter here, but with the attorney, city manager, and yourself, you've mentioned ad hoc several times, Councilmember Vega and myself were the ad hoc. The rest of the council has never reviewed any of our recommendations, so... The rest of the council has never reviewed any of our recommendations sometime after budget. Is this something we could possibly put on an agenda? I don't want to make a council request now, but I mean, at least the rest of the council would know what the ad hoc recommendations were. We're doing a technical general plan update.
Yeah, I'll defer to the city manager, but I have no problem bringing it back.
I don't want to go too far off the subject here and request an agenda item and all that right now, but I mean, it's something that maybe we should bring forward here.
I think if Brian thinks it's a good thing to bring forward, I support it.
That was easy.
Yeah, there you go.
I guess the city manager's having an evaluation.
We can bring those, we probably need to tidy them up a little bit, but we can bring that back as a council request item, and I am going to be bringing back-
Do we need a council request for that attorney, or?
If the staff is going to bring it back on their own, then you don't need one.
We will bring it back.
All right. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
There, I appreciate that you're excited, but there's actually no clapping. We're, not even for the general plan. Thank you. So for those of you still watching that want to know where to go and do your broadband test from home or for work, it is www.pcbroadband.org, or pc-broadband.org. And do it from a desktop or laptop, not from your cellphone, because that's on a different system, and it will walk you through and pull the data down and store it on that site as to what your upload and download speed, so how quickly it takes you to make an attachment and send it out, say necessarily by email, or how long it might take you to download something that you're watching or streaming. But it does that by just sending information back and forth over the line, and that'll help that original presentation about whether we really are getting the service that the service providers say we're getting. All right, we will move on to general oral communication. This is for any item, city-related matter that is not currently on the agenda. If you can't stay for one of those items, you're absolutely welcome to speak to it, but it is preferred that you speak on the item when it comes to the agenda. You have three minutes. The number to call is 805-875-8201. The floor is now open.
Deb Andrews, Lompoc. I just want to make a, excuse me, a brief comment about the housing element presentation. Central planning is communism. Perhaps you could not comply with those that tell you what to do with the city of Lompoc, and consider it a violation of the constitution, and keep your oath of office. Do what is best for our city. There's been expressed concern for health. Today, we are greeted by a sign recommending masks. Recent testimony from a business owner expressed relief that the amount of human waste is reduced as a result of the new fencing by the river where homeless live. His testimony suggests Lompoc homeless residents need access to toilet and shower facilities. I urge you to take into consideration for action testimony shared during meetings. Millions of dollars are spent by the city of Lompoc each month. Establish a health-based center for Lompoc homeless, safe disposal of human waste, and good hygiene have been basic elements of good health for thousands of years. Provide your homeless constituents with clean, safe toilet and shower facilities. This would benefit the entire community, as expressed by that business owner. Demonstrate that you are sincerely concerned about health and not just control of behavior.
All right, seeing no one else rise and no one call in, we will close general oral communication and come back to our council. We have item number five, Parks and Recreation Analysis, the Ryan Park Performance Stage Repair or Replacement Feasibility, Selection of Options for Repair or Replacement of Stage, and Jason Rojas, our Parks Project Coordinator, will provide the information.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council.
Sorry, Jason. Yes, it's a copy of the PowerPoint and a copy of the performance.
Just a working budget.
Working budget.
Is that, is the budget documented in the packet?
Is it part of the packet?
Uh, no.
No. Do you have extra copies?
We just need to have copies of that for the public during the- So, thank you. So during the item, city clerk, could you make copies for the public for this document that the staff handed to the council? Not the PowerPoint, but just the budget document.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. I will be presenting a staff report for the Ryan Park Performance Stage this evening. The handouts provided are copies of this presentation, along with copies of the working budget for each option that we will discuss on the following slides. The City Council requested staff to report and to allow for discussion concerning repair and/or replacement of the existing performance stage located at Ryan Park. The purpose of this staff report is to open discussion, decide upon the appropriate course of action to either rehabilitate the existing stage or to replace it, and/or to direct staff with an alternate direction. Staff has identified three viable options to address this item. Option one is to repair the existing performance stage from its current as-is condition. Option two is to demolish the existing stage and to build a new performance stage similar in size and best suited to meet our community needs. Or option three is to purchase a mobile stage unit. Option one is to repair the existing performance stage from its current as-is condition. These few photos show a snapshot of the existing condition of this stage. Option one work items include repair the damaged concrete masonry unit wall, resurface the concrete stage area, build a new stage backdrop, add an ADA point of access to the stage area, and regrade the surrounding stage. The base cost estimate for this option is roughly $74,000. And again, this is just rough base estimates based upon the scope of work items as discussed. Option two, we are looking to demolish the existing structure and build a new performance stage similar in size and best suited to meet our community needs. These work items include demolishing the existing stage, building a new stage within the existing footprint area, build a new, build new stairs and ADA compliant points of access, and build a new stage backdrop. The photos I included here are just some examples of what could be added to that site. These are just for reference only. The base cost estimate for option number two is $220,000. And again, that's dependent upon the course of action that is decided upon. Option three is to purchase a mobile stage unit. For this option, the city could choose to demolish or leave the existing stage at Ryan Park, but still purchase a new mobile stage unit that could be used in various manners and locations, including at Ryan Park. Staff has researched various vendors and are presenting the Stage Line 100 series this evening, as you can see on the attached photos. For discussion purposes, I have included the demolition cost to this option at Ryan Park. The total estimate cost for this option is roughly $237,000. This slide shows a few of the many different configurations that are available for a mobile stage unit. So it really opens up our options and use, different venue types and whatnot. Moving on to the fiscal impact for this, currently, there is no fiscal impact to the city, and will be dependent upon which option or direction the City Council provides to staff. I also want to inform the City Council that currently, there is no appropriations for the stage project, and the stage is not listed in the current capital improvement plan. This concludes my staff report and presentation for this item, and I am available to answer any questions that you may have.
Councilmember Vega.
Jason, thank you so much, okay? I think, I think moving forward with something is better than letting it stay the same, so I appreciate the choices and options. I think for us with Lompoc, and because it's such an important economic spot, an entertainment spot for Lompoc, I think that, I'm not sure if there's been a study done on, obviously we have a cost to repair the stage. Does that include, do you know what that includes? Is that replacing the electrical, resurfacing, putting the ADA compliance, is there any kind of a wall that can be put up as a windbreak to that stage? That would be probably something that would be good to know.
Yes, in option one, in the attached Excel spreadsheet, it includes the breakout of the repair to the CMU wall for structural integrity, the resurfacing of the concrete stage area, including a new backdrop, and it depends on the style and what we wanted to do. A few of the slides have some options. Pershing Park in Santa Barbara is a good example of what our stage may have looked like at one point or another. I'm not too sure, and I did some research to try to find what it could have looked like, and I couldn't find anything on the history of the stage. But yes, that detailed breakout shows each option, the cost for each option, and what that work, the scope of work includes.
Yeah, because I think, I think that repairing the existing stage, you know, if the cost is not so prohibitive, would make sense if it's repairable, okay? Not an engineer, so that's why I'm counting on you to tell me that it can be repaired, correct?
Looking at it, yes, it can be repaired. The only thing, it really limits your use and your availability to use something like this at other locations, where if we were to incur the costs, like to repair the stage or to do something different, the costs incurred, it wouldn't be wasted, in my opinion, but it could be better service elsewhere.
Well, I see the options of portability, and I know that's probably where the park and recreations is leaning for multiple uses, but for me, portable's portable. It doesn't last that long either, so you're still going to be wasting your money if you're going to spend a couple hundred thousand dollars on something that can be used here and there, when we really don't have a focus on using any other park, except sporadically, basically everything comes back to Ryan Park. I think that is something that we should be proud of. I brought that up before. I think that we should have some sort of a, some sort of a, either clamshell or walls or something there for acoustics, because we have attracted quite a few musicians and a lot of acts and things like that. I think that would be a great benefit to Lompoc, to see some sort of permanent infrastructure here repaired and made better, you know?
Sure.
So that's kind of my opinion, that Lompoc going portable would be just exactly what people would expect, and I think we should, we should raise the bar a little bit and actually make it better. And so as far as the money and the funding, maybe that should be a focus on as we bring this back, and I know that it was on a priority list, and I remember Kristi Ellicon said that there's no money for it, but I think our focus should be on finding funding with our priorities instead of making it a priority and have no funding, because that's, that way, at least it gets done, or we can actually have a focus on finding which grants are available for that specific project, because I'm told that, and you may be, you're probably the expert on this one, as you fix each park, the grant funding is specific to the park, is that correct?
Typically, yes. That's correct.
So maybe we need to focus on approving and moving forward with something like this, improving the stage, make it better, looks like anything can be fixed, and finding the funding for it, and make that a focus, so that it stays up on the priority list.
Okay.
That's kind of my direction there, and my focus on seeing Lompoc made better in a permanent style, not, don't want it to be portable. I think that we can do better.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cordova.
So I definitely agree with what Councilmember Starb-, or Victor just said, Vega, sorry. I, I do think that finding the funding is critical, because I would hate to make this a priority if we don't have funding available for it, but if there's ways that we can do it. Just a question, though, the option one, is it able to also repair like electrical components that would be required for there to be musicians and to be acts on the stage? Would that, is that included on there?
Well, that's definitely something we could take a look at. I did not look at the infrastructure integrity, electrical. I know that there's been quite a bit of work done to it recently, but I have not done any testing to see what type of condition it's in currently. And then also to have something like a stage booth area, I know when they have concerts out there for the Flower Festival, they have a separate stage booth, like a control area. So I haven't done any investigation to see what type of infrastructure we're dealing with over there now. I'm just, I was strictly looking at the integrity of the stage itself, see what was feasible, and each one of the options I presented are feasible that we can move forward with. I could include taking a look at the infrastructure on the electrical side and see what condition it currently is in, and if it can handle the capacity for events that we typically have at that location.
Yeah, I think, and I do appreciate, too, the number of options being brought forth, but I do think it's a little incomplete, because it does us no good to repair a, an existing structure if we don't have the additional components, like the electrical and stuff that would need to be a part of what the success of that facility would be.
I completely agree with you there. I wanted to narrow down the scope and just keep it apples for apples and not include infrastructure costs involved to just replacing, replacement of the stage.
Because that would increase the cost of whether we did option one or option two. And even if we did option three, there would be potentially some increased cost. I agree, too, that option three is, I think there's nostalgia, and there's history, and there's-
It sure is.
-a lot of stuff that goes with Ryan Park.
Sure.
I think it's very Lompoc. If we were to repair it, I'm always a fan of tear it down and rebuild something new, but I really actually think in this case, repairing it, if it's, if it's less expensive and we can, and we can bring it to a new luster by creating also the stage backdrop and ensuring that the components, like I said, the electrical is very important, and making it ADA compliant, I think it could work for Lompoc, and I think it would really enhance that park, and we would see some increased revenue and some additional tourism come in, and just that whole hometown feeling of what that has historically been in the past. So I would love to see that happen.
Councilmember Ball.
Yeah, I'm going to kind of piggyback on that. I look through, and I'm into music, I really appreciate that play a little bit on the side, but I was really, liked the whole idea of the mobile stage, I thought that was really cool. Then I go back to the issue of like, okay, as soon as we get that, somebody's got to maintain it, and we got to have a plan in place, and then we've got to go activate people wanting to use it and hopefully recoup some costs. So I do think that that should be something that should potentially be considered, but with that should come a plan, like this is how parks are going to recoup some of that cost by creating some events or having that be a-
Potentials there, too.
I do see potential there, but specifically for this one, look, I'm not trying to date myself a little bit, but I went to preschool across the fence right there at Ryan Park, there's the little church that had preschool, and the stage looks exactly the same. So for all those that are worried about demolishing it, I mean, how many millions of kids' footprints have gone all over that and it's still standing? So I do think there's potential to update it, to fix it. I do agree, it has to, you know, we've got some people that really know how to rock out on guitar, and they need a lot of electrical power, and we have our own utilities, so we shouldn't have a problem making that happen. So it should be a comprehensive fix, but I'd love to see if there is a cost-effective way for us to look at updating this stage from, through the lens of it being an economic driver, meaning this is, this is one step in the right direction of letting outsiders know that this is a place we'd love for you to come and consider hosting an event, and I think it could lead to a little bit more tourism and folks from out of town helping pay our bills a little bit, so, but having something permanent and static and something that we're proud of that could last for- that we're proud of that could last for more than five years, I think would be ideal.
Okay.
Councilmember Starb.
Thank you. Well, to piggyback on that, the stage looks the same as when I was young too.
We were in the same class.
Very close. Yeah, I was a year behind you. Jason, how accurate do you feel these estimates are?
Well, these, these estimates were compiled on numbers that we're actually working with now on other projects. So again, it's just a, a base cost estimate of, of what the potential is of what we could do. Again, that's, that, as we fine tune it.
I'm really siding with, with everybody on the council with, you know, portable, right, collapse, you know, I've just, I like to keep what we have. You know, here you got seventy-three thousand, seventy-four thousand dollars to do a rebuild and you show on the options, a very nice looking stage. To go in there and tear that stage out and to rebuild, now you're looking at two-hundred-and-thirty and the options look the same. So to me, it's pretty much a no-brainer that we would want to go ahead and do the rebuild on that. If this is a true option and we could get it included in the budget, I'm going to consider this a bargain as compared to what we spent straightening the arches at the entryway.
Right.
So, yeah, I would totally be with option one as long as we could deliver what we are showing on the option one, the Pershing stage.
Sure. Well, as option one, if we decided to go that route, as option one develops, we, during the design process, we would have to reevaluate it and, and kind of wrangle in the design so it doesn't get blown out of proportion and we have a lot of amenities that we don't necessarily need. If we're trying to work within a certain budget, we could, we could work with that in the design phase and fine tune the scope so that way we're within whatever budget we're trying to target.
I think what you're asking for is what do, what would we think is the best? And I'm gathering from what I'm hearing that option one is
Okay.
probably what everybody's leaning towards and financially it looks much more doable than going in and redoing it. Chances of growth on a new construction are far more than repairing an old construction, so I would certainly go with option one here.
Mayor?
And then when we get it all done, Jeremy and I can go put our handprints on it too.
So, um, one thing to remember is we still need to do public comment, so.
Mayor, can I make a comment?
I was going to yield to you next.
Okay. I just wanted to, uh, thank you guys for, one, for giving your input on, on capital improvements. Also wanted to educate everybody for the edification of how we are going to put this budget together. When we start crafting the budget together, we're going to separate the budget into two different piles. One will be ongoing revenues, that'll, that'll pay for ongoing service levels like police, fire and so forth. And if we have surpluses, which I know we'll have this year, we'll push that into a capital improvement like we did last year and we'll bring that for you guys' input. So this is a great example and this is a, a great exercise in, on coming up with priorities. And so I want to let you guys know that we will have capital improvement funding coming back to you guys.
All right, uh, let's wrap up questions of staff and then we'll go to public comment. Councilwoman Cordova.
Music to my ears when I hear the city manager say that we are going to be able to have some money for capital improvements. But going back to this, I agree, we have to go to public comment, but I, I think that if we, if we consider option one, because I, in my opinion, that's the most reasonable one that we could potentially make happen, we, I agree, we don't want to get out of context with it. We don't want to make a whole lot of additions that is going to blow the project out of, out of whatever our, our budget reach would be. But it's, it's, it's the rehabilitation of the existing unit, not considering expansion of what, of what is here. It's just the rehabilitation of this, but adding the electrical component to me is very important because you need that for, you know, the use of it. Obviously, adding as what you stated here, the ADA compliance ramp, that's very important because we need to make sure that that's there. And then if there is a need to regrade the surrounding area for, you know, then, then that's fine too, but I wouldn't, really wouldn't add too much to that so that we could keep it a very realistic goal and make it happen and use it in that manner. So that would be my recommendation.
Councilmember Ball.
Yeah, just real quick. So I, I think at the end of this, and this is just me, me hoping, if, if we spent seventy-five grand and it just looked like it was a little bit shinier concrete and it looked exactly the same, that's probably not the finish line that some of us are hoping for, but we all know that that takes a little bit of investment. So I'm just throwing it out there and this is not necessarily a, a question, but perhaps it'll rattle around a few views of yours heads. There have been, in the past, there have been private partnerships with the city in taking on a project. So I'm just throwing it out there. I don't know if that would potentially be a solution, but I'd be curious to know if, for example, if we were to get a clamshell or to do something like that, would there be funding opportunities? Say, for example, someone in the community wanted to donate money to the city's new nonprofit and they wanted to stipulate that it would go to something like that. I, I would love to, to know what are, what are the, what's the range of options that we might have in terms of a serious conversation with the city for us to not just fix the stage, fix the concrete, but actually take it to the finish line of something that's actually really nice and that we're all proud of. But it does take money and the city alone may have some challenges. So anyway, just throwing it out there, I'd love to, to know what we might be able to do.
Councilmember Cordova.
Sorry, one more question. So when you list on here to build the state, a new stage backdrop, that is the?
The surround.
Yeah, okay, so it is in here.
Yeah, just going back to this example here at Pershing Park, it, the backdrop is similar to that in size of, of what we had at Ryan Park before. If you look at the stage itself, you can see a, a semi-circle on the stage. It's roughly the same size. I don't know how the surrounding area was built out to round it, but it gives you a good idea of what was probably there before for the performers and then to exit the stage off to the side and have a little change in area in the backside of it. So we would do something similar, but again, it would, it would go through comment and then staff would take a look at it and there would be multiple options as far as the design and what we're looking at. It would be something we'd definitely be bringing back.
And when we talk about resurfacing the concrete stage, I'm assuming that we are going in and filling the cracks and looking at the entire perimeter of the stage and re-curbing that so that it's, it's, it's brought up to a brand-new look?
Correct. If you look at the photo that we have here of the existing stage, you can see that there's several areas where the CMU is cracked, it's split all the way through. So we would need to do some work to structurally save the integrity of that. And then, of course, the overlay, yes, we would fill in the cracks on the stage and then do a complete overlay on top. So it's a, it's a continuous surface.
Yeah, so it would, it would look nice.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, if there are no more questions for staff at the moment, we'll go to public comment. If you would like to speak on this item, you're welcome to come to the podium or you may call in. The number to call is eight zero five eight seven five eight two zero one.
Good afternoon, council. I have two comments to make. One is to help put a nail in the mobile. Right now, as a nonprofit organization, you can use the stage fairly simply without a lot of city staff requirements. If you go to a mobile stage, that's going to significantly increase the complexity of the local nonprofits to go in and do one, one-day items and then we'll, I'm sure city staff will be, have to be paid to put it up and things of that nature. My second comment, I don't know why I'm beeping. My second comment is kind of going on top of your statement. You could sell naming rights to the stage. I'm sure you'd be able to get somebody to pony up some money if it was called the, you know, Steve Bridge Memorial Stage or something, so it's just a thought.
Thank you. Again, if you'd like to call in, the number to call is eight zero five eight seven five eight two zero one. Madam clerk, did we have any written comment for this? I'm sorry, you have to come to the microphone, we have to record it. I, I apologize. Were there any written comments?
No ma'am, nothing.
Thank you.
Lynn White, Everett Heritage Real Estate, do fundraising, sell bricks, talk to some of the local pizza places, they do fundraising for things all the time. Put a note on the utility bill, do you want to donate to our new stage? I think there's lots of ways you could raise the money to put up your shell in the back for this thing. Those are my suggestions.
Thank you. All right, seeing no one else rise and no one call in, we will close public comment on this. I think that council very much wants to see this concept. I think it's important that you take our feedback and come back with options surrounding this, in particular for our budget discussion for CIP. That, I, I, does this need a motion to direct them to come back on item one with more ideas? Or is it something that we'll do more of when we discuss CIP? Looking for city manager, because you were like, there's no money to do it now, but there will be when we do budget discussion.
I don't, I don't think it needed a motion. I'm, I'm sure Iraq is going to bring it back and I'm, I'm sure that they're pretty excited about having a list of projects to bring back for capital improvements and, but if you want to give us direction, either or would work because I really want to encourage you guys to give us your input.
Okay. Councilmember Cordova.
I'll let Victor go first.
Okay, Victor?
I'd like to make that motion to give some direction instead of informal formally so that we can come back and see what the true cost is to refurbish the stage, including the electrical, including the backdrop, as stated, because I like those ideas that you came out. And I'd like to thank you for bringing so many options here because normally we get one option or two option, but you gave us several, okay? And I think that coming back here with that and with a path, hopefully the city manager with his financial background can come to us with a path to how we can get there within a certain timeframe instead of wait until Dirk is not here anymore. Right Dirk? Okay, thank you. No, but anyway, maybe, maybe the mayor can help me. Can you box that in a little bit better?
I'm just hearing that you, instead of just an informal direction of all the things we provided, that you actually want a formal request. The question is, with your formal request, do you want it to come back sooner than we have our CIP discussion or do you want it to come back when we have our discussion about how to spend potential additional funds?
Yeah, let, let's come back when we, during our discussion for how to spend additional funds.
Okay.
That's more proper.
Okay.
But thank you so much and that's kind of, I don't know if we need to vote or that's a motion or?
That's a motion and we'll, we'll wait to see if councilmember Cordova has something she wants to add to it or give you a second. All right, councilmember Cordova.
I was actually going to say the exact same thing, so you have my second on that and I'll leave it at that.
All right. Any questions, concerns, additions that weren't caught in our discussion or that staff needs from us? All right, seeing none, let's vote. And that passes five zero. All right, item number six, adoption of resolution number sixty-five fifty-four parentheses twenty-two, rescinding the moratorium on utility service disconnections for non-payment and rescinding waiver of late fees and penalties on utility accounts. And we have our management service director Christine Dolly to make the presentation.
Good evening, council, honorable mayor, members of the public, city staff. And I apologize, I wasn't going to do a PowerPoint presentation, but then I just couldn't help myself. But it is, it's short. We presented the staff report you have in front of you and just want to kind of review the, the last couple of years and where we are with utility disconnects. As you may remember, in, on March seventeenth, twenty twenty, we initiated a moratorium on the utility disconnect policies. And so since March seventeenth of twenty twenty, we have not disconnected utilities for non-payment. That has resulted as, as of the end of October, that four thousand three hundred and six accounts were late, that's equal to about forty-two percent of our customer base. We have made payment plans available to customers and as of right now, well, as of the time that I put together this presentation, there were eighty-six that were on payment plans. We've got that up to ninety-three. That is a very small percentage of our late accounts. We have, thanks to the hard work of, of my staff, have been able to apply for and get grants for arreages and, and some rebates totaling four point seven million dollars. This has gone towards the, towards customer bills that are in arrears. This is the summary of what we have applied to customer accounts on average. So there's a wide range. When you apply a credit to an arrearg account, a customer may have five dollars in arrears and that's all that they would get is whatever was in arrears. Some of the customers had larger amounts that qualified. So these averages are, are just that, but electric late accounts averaged about a thousand dollars of a credit and a rebate. Water late accounts received an average of about five hundred and twelve dollars and sewer late accounts had an average of five hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And, and that's how, basically how that four point seven million was divided up. Some people were able to get all of those because if they were late on electric and water and sewer, they may have gotten those. So we have provided assistance through the COVID pandemic to customers who have not been able to pay their bills. However, because we haven't been doing disconnects, our utility billing accounts receivable, which means this is the total value of dollars that are behind, this is just the late portion, is about four point eight million dollars. That was as of the end of September. Without the grants that we just talked about, we would be at nine million dollars right now. Before the pandemic, we were running at about on, on our accounts receivable, and this is an estimate of two point four million. So you can see that it's starting to get out of hand. Our June projection, a projection for June twenty twenty-three, if we don't restart with disconnects for non-payment, that we're going to be at seven point one million of late payments and that would be a total utility billing accounts receivable reported on our financials of ten point seven million. So staff and I have come up with a, a plan for reinstating effective April twenty twenty-three. Between now and March, we want to put our efforts towards this plan. Communicating with customers is the biggest, the biggest piece of this. By the time that we propose reinstating the disconnects, it would be, have been three years that customers have been able to not pay their bills and not have any repercussions for that. And so we want to make sure that we communicate with our customers that there are options and that they need to start paying. We will offer customers to get on payment plans and we offer very reasonable payment plans. The average bill right now is about twelve hundred dollars or late, late, be, late payment. And we have made it so that people who have larger amounts, see, I'm going to go and just.
You're juggling so much, yeah.
Where was I? We offer payment plans. So the average, we, we are hoping to be able to get people on even longer-term payment plans would be possible, but we need to be able to get people in to start making those payments. We will communicate with, with customers, assistance that's available to them. One of the things that we are going to need to do is test our new, our MUNIS system. Because we implemented MUNIS for utility billing during the pandemic, we have not had to do disconnects with that system. And so we are working on getting training to come out and, and then additionally training our staff. We have a lot of new staff in three years that haven't been through the process of having to turn off utilities and it's not something that any of us relish doing, but it, again, we need to be able to operate. One of the things that I mentioned in this, in the staff report is that if we, if we don't start to get recouped for some of these, all of these arreages, we're going to have to look at potentially raising rates for those customers who are paying and then you're looking at paying customers supplementing non-paying customers and that's just not you're looking at paying customers supplementing non-paying customers, and that's just not right. So ultimately, we are proposing to restart disconnects in April of 2023. The reason why we're waiting until April is because the most recent grant program has a 90-day pause condition in it, and we just got those funds. We're going to be distributing credits onto, on accounts in January. That will start the 90, final 90-day clock, in which case we can start doing disconnects in April. And that is it. Any questions?
Councilmember Starbuck.
Thank you. Yes, yes. I guess my, my biggest question is, pre-pandemic, we carried about 2.4 million in, in arrears. Some of it was people making payments, getting behind, but there were a lot of people that would just skip their bills, i.e., leave their residence, and the city was left holding the bag on what they were owed. We don't know the exact amount now, nor do we expect it, but with this most recent grant that you talked about, could we use that to pay for the people that deadbeat us? It has to be for an active account?
It has to be for, it has to be for specific accounts that we've already, that we've submitted, that were in arrears during a specific time period, and it is only for, in this case, it's electric. And so we don't have the ability to apply it towards a collection, accounts that have gone towards collections.
Towards collections, and, you know, we sold carbon credits and we credited everybody $150. What number would have, if we didn't do that, what would, would it have been 12 million vice 10, or which account was it?
So the rebate number that I have up there, with the grants and rebates included that, 2.2 million of carbon credit rebates.
Ah, it was included in that.
And so it was included in those numbers. That was part of it.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Cordova.
Christie, I say thank you too, because I think that sometimes we're, we don't realize what a great blessing, you know, the city really does try to do its best to assist in its residents and the needs of this community. There's a lot of different ways, this just happens to be one of them, but, and also for being so resourceful and seeking those grants and trying to get that reimbursement, because that's money that's also being forgiven for, for the residents. I, yeah, I can't, I can't thank you enough on behalf of the residents of this community that are, that are taking part in this needs, but, and I, originally, when I read this, I thought, well, why do we want to wait until April if the, the, the sum keeps, you know, going up? But I fully understand then that in order to implement the new grant, which, again, thank you for that, but also there's, I really, really want to say thank you for the proposed schedule and the way that you guys have planned out notifying customers, giving them the information, working with them, getting them to that point, so that nobody is, is just hit with it and said, hey, listen, you got to pay up, or, or you're not going to, or you're going to be disconnected. So that in itself is a blessing, and I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Vega.
Christie, just to, to clarify here on the payment plans, before it was a year.
Yes.
Correct? That you had payments, and now I read here that we do have another plan for people that, that owe more than $600, correct?
That is correct. We have, because...
So you've extended it to 24, 24 months, correct?
That's correct.
So it doesn't take anything special, except that you owe over 600, to pay your arrears in that 24 months?
That's correct.
They can make payments. So can you give me an example of what that would be for someone that owed $1,000?
So, for, for my brain that's tired right now, let's, we're going to say 1,200, which is the average. So if a customer owed 600, they, they would be paying $50 a month for the period of a, of a year. So we're allowing them to do that over two years. If they have a $1,200 bill, that they weren't going to pay more than $50, but it'll, they'll have to pay it for two years, rather than the one year. So if, if, if a customer, in your, in this case, has a $1,200 arrears, they would be paying $50 a month for two years, and that would cut, and their current bill as well. I just want to make sure that that's clear.
Yeah, no, I got you.
That, that the payment plan is contingent upon keeping your current paid. And then in addition to that, and, and our hope would be, you know, we, we've looked at some of the other, we've talked to some of our community, other cities, and some of them have very unforgiving payment plans, where if it's less than, and I, right now, I don't remember the exact number, but it was less than, it was $1,000 that you had to pay it over three months, and then if it was anything beyond that, it had to be paid within six months, and that was it. Six months was the most that they got, and, you know, my, my heart really is more of a, you know, I just want to, want people to start paying. If we know it's going to be coming, then we will get, we will work with you. We, we want to work with the customers.
I just want to make sure the flexibility is there. I've gotten a lot of calls from people that are still having a hardship. I have no qualms with actually reinstating the payment of utilities. I just want to make sure that the people that are for their arrears are taken care of, and there is another sidebar plan, because I can hear some of the council people up here, you know, you, thank you, thank you, I get it, for the money, and we need the money, and I'm, I'm on, on par with them, but we, there's the people's side of this, and I want to make sure of that not all of them are deadbeats, as councilman Starbuck said, okay? Someone, some people actually had a, have had a hardship, and they're still having a hardship, so not all of them are like that. So I want to make sure that we don't look at them as deadbeats, we want to say, okay, you got to pay your arrears, now you have to pay your current bill. So that's all I'm looking for, okay? Something like that, to make sure we're going to be a little, have a little bit of flexibility there for people that could have a genuine hardship.
And we did, we extended the, the timeframe from a year to two years exactly for that reason, so that people who have larger balances would be able to, to not be as impacted by the need to have...
Yeah, and I think it helped a lot of people not to have paid, so I get it. It's just, you know, it wasn't anybody's fault, so we just have to shore up the boat, but thanks, okay? I just want to make sure that is.
Councilmember Ball.
I'll be really quick with this, so maybe, because I'm supposed to ask you some questions, maybe you can just correct me if I'm right or wrong, so.
Okay.
Let me, right or wrong, city staff, mostly in your department, worked really hard to get, is it $4.7 million in assistance for...
So 2.2 of that is, are the rebates that, that Mr. Starbuck was mentioning. I've got the exact number of the grants here. So two, about 2.2, 2.5 million in grants that had, that they have gotten, and those are four different grants through the, the water board and the, I only know of my, they're, they're acronyms, so it's CAP, we call it CAP and QUAP, are the two, so.
So I, the reason I'm saying that is I, I can just imagine April of next year rolls around, and there'll be some discontent from certain folks who are faced with disconnection, but I really want to commend you and the city staff, and remind everyone here that, yeah, they're going to turn on the bills, you got to start paying your bill, but the city has been working really hard to make sure that people can keep their lights on, and the power in the sewer and the water working, and we've been incredibly flexible, and you just mentioned how going above and beyond in terms of being flexible. So, correct me if I'm wrong, the best way to avoid disconnection in the future is just to reach out to the city and to learn more about their repayment plan, and to know that the city is flexible, and we're encouraging our staff to work with everyone to try to get it.
Absolutely. We, we want to work with our customers to get, help them get the bills paid, and, and we're willing to do payment plans. Of course, if, if a customer is capable and is able to pay the full amount, then that is the best way to do it, is to get your, get caught up and, and not have to set up a payment plan, because, you know, that is additional work for city staff to set those up.
Well, I just appreciate, again, the thoughtfulness of the city, and for all of you that are in, that, you know, communicate with people in the, in the community, pass this along, that the city wants to keep the lights on, that we need everyone to know that this is going to be happening, and going to be happening pretty soon, so get the word out. And then again, thank you to the city for working so hard to make it as easy as possible for everyone. Appreciate it.
Any more questions before we go to public comment? Thank you, Christie.
Thank you.
The floor is now open for public comment on this item. If you'd like to speak, you may come to the podium, you have three minutes. If you'd like to call in, the number to call is 805-875-8201. Madam Clerk, did we have any written communications on this item?
No, ma'am, nothing.
All right. All right, as you heard earlier, there's a time delay, so I have to give the public that is watching and listening appropriate time to call in if they'd like. Again, the number is 805-875-8201. While we fill that time, I want to say, for those of you that noted, go ahead, come on.
Jane Bear. I guess my question would be, I'm surprised you didn't differentiate between commercial accounts and residential, because it seems like you might have different rules for commercial accounts.
Thank you. All right, seeing no one else rise, and no one call in, and no written, we will close public comment on this item and bring it back for council. Any other discussion or questions? Councilmember Cordova.
I, I move to accept staff recommendation for rescinding the moratorium on utility service disconnects, nonpayments, and waiver of late fees, and to make it effective beginning April of 2023.
Thank you.
I'll actually second.
And we have a second. Any other questions? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes five zero. All right. Councilmember Starbuck has requested a break, so we will give you five minutes, and then we will return to the dais. give you five minutes and then we will return to the dais. All right, we're going to reconvene and move on to item number seven.
Mayor, before we start on item number seven, I wanted to say for the record that Councilmember Cordova and I had a discussion about this item prior to the meeting, and due to a potential conflict of interest that she may have on this, on one of her financial interests on this item may be impacted by the council's decision, that is her business legend hospitality, she is going to recuse herself from this item tonight in abundance of caution due to the potential conflict of interest and leave the room for the discussion tonight, the presentation and the discussion tonight.
All right, thank you. Got all your stuff?
Okay, thank you, Mayor and City Council. I want to give a, try to give a very quick staff report tonight because we have a lengthy presentation by the proposed developer who's in the audience, and we'll also have public comment on this. In July of 2019, the City Council entered into an MOU with Pale Blue Dot Ventures, which is a group that proposed to develop a space center project on approximately eighty-two acres that are including and adjacent to Can Adam Park in Lompoc. And the purpose of the MOU is so that the city and the Pale Blue Dot Ventures group could have an exclusive negotiating period where the city is not allowed to negotiate with anyone else for development of that property or to consider any other use on that property other than the Pale Blue Dot proposed space center project. And that gives Pale Blue Dot some security and some ability to know that they have an exclusive with the city during the period of the MOU. So also during the period of the MOU, the MOU calls for Pale Blue Dot to meet a fundraising requirement that the city set when we entered into this agreement. And that was for Pale Blue Dot to raise at least $750,000 in seed funding for the project. $250,000 of that could be in in-kind services, but $500,000 of it needed to be in cash. Also, under the MOU, Pale Blue Dot was to prepare a concept and feasibility study and an experience design plan for the project and to present those to the City Council. That is the intent of the agenda item tonight is for those to be presented to you, which will happen after my staff report. And then after those two items, the next step in the MOU would be to continue on and begin, if the council was satisfied and willing to move forward, to continue on to negotiate a disposition and development agreement with the developer, with Pale Blue Dot. And that would govern, after it's negotiated, which would take a number of months, that will govern the development of the project, the type of uses that the City Council wants to see on the project, and the eventual sale of the property to Pale Blue Dot. A lot of things would need to be worked out in those negotiations, and we're not at that stage yet. During the period of the MOU, of course, we had the COVID pandemic, and for that and other reasons, the MOU deadlines have been extended a number of times over the past three years. And we have current up-to-date deadlines for the fundraising requirement of $750,000 with at least $500,000 in cash. The deadline to provide proof of that to the city was September 30th, 2022. The deadline to present the concept and feasibility study and experience design plan is December 31st, 2022. And the exclusive negotiating period in the MOU in its entirety is currently scheduled to expire on December 31st of 2022, which is this month. So as far as the compliance with the fundraising requirement, on September 30th, which is within the deadline, Pale Blue Dot submitted evidence to the city of having raised certain funds and claimed to meet the $750,000 requirement. The city hired a consultant to review that information that we received, and the consultant determined that Pale Blue Dot did meet the $250,000 requirement for in-kind services. But on the $500,000 in cash requirement, the consultant verified that $285,986 had been raised in cash, but needed some additional documentation to verify and prove that an additional $214,14 was raised to meet the 500,000 requirement. We requested that documentation on November 4th from Pale Blue Dot, and at the time of the staff report, we had not received it. But on last Friday, which was December 2nd, we did receive additional information from Pale Blue Dot to, to attempt, in their attempt to prove that that additional $214,14 was raised. Our consultant and staff, since it was just received on Friday, has not had time to fully evaluate that additional submission yet. So we don't have for you tonight whether Pale Blue Dot has fully complied, in the city's opinion, with the fundraising requirement. Like I said, the concept and feasibility study and experience design plan is going to be presented tonight. The deadline for that was December 31st. And the current exclusive negotiating period expires on December 31st of this year. So the idea for tonight is to receive and see the presentation from Pale Blue Dot and then decide if the council wishes to extend the exclusive negotiating period in the MOU for, I've proposed an additional four months if you wanted to extend it. That would give us a good period of time, four month period of time, to get started on negotiating a disposition and development agreement with the developer and see how far we get in four months. So that would be May 1st of 2023. And if the council decides not to extend the MOU tonight, then it would simply expire on December 31st. The council has no obligation to extend this tonight. But if you wish to, I am proposing that four-month extension date to see how far we can get with the negotiations on the development agreement. The developer, Pale Blue Dot, is continuing to cover all of the city's costs in processing this proposal, in processing all the staff reports that we've had on the various extensions, and the staff time required to process this item, and will continue to pay for the city's costs if we go on and negotiate a DDA. And with that, that concludes my staff report. I would suggest the council, unless you have any questions for me, you now receive the presentation from Pale Blue Dot and take public comment, and then enter into deliberations after that. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Let's have the presentation.
Well, thank you, council members and Mayor. Thanks for the time. Thanks for making the time. Some of the city attorney stuff I'll respond to a little bit later, but, but I want to say thank you to all the people that have shown up and came back in October, and also that have shown up and stayed here tonight to hear what we have to say. We think we've got a great story to tell. Uh-oh, that's definitely not the right one. There we go. Okay, so why are we here? We're going to the moon, and then we're going to Mars. And this is going to happen in the next couple of years. We want to entertain people in this location. We need to educate them because it's fundamental to what we're going to do, and we need to inspire them. I won't read through this other stuff. That's quite important to, you know, what we hope to do in this project. So a quick update. In our view, we've complied with the, we've raised over $780,000. In our view, we've complied with that requirement. We've sent information to the city, which is quite extensive, a three-ring binder with a lot of information in it. And then we've also provided information to their consultant. And so, as recently as Friday, and then we just heard yesterday that, so we have a dialogue with them, and we have an ongoing dialogue with them. And in fact, I made an offer on the 1st of November, and I've got a copy of that with me to address some of those issues. But anyway, let's move on for the moment. We have an MOU with a leading ride and show company called Dynamic Attractions. It's a Canadian company. They do projects around the world for some of the biggest companies around the world, including Disney and Universal. We've licensed our first movie, Woman in Motion, which is Nichelle Nichols, her story in Star Trek and NASA. We've got, we're working with an educational creator network. They're doing work up at Vandenberg at Crestview. We, last time we were here in October, we spent about ninety minutes with senior leadership at Vandenberg about how we can work together. And then Reach Central Coast in Vandenberg put together a commercial space master plan. And two of those goals fall right in our sweet spot. That's STEM, increasing STEM, and also integrating the entertainment and tourism activities on the central coast. Okay, Bob?
Yep, thank you. Hi, thanks for having us. My name is Bob Allen. I'm the CEO of a company called Ideas in Orlando, Florida, and we are the principal experience designers on the project and have been from the beginning. Wanted to talk a little bit about this board, just to make sure everybody understands that these kinds of projects are quite complex, and they require a great number of people and a great number of discipline. We formed an extraordinarily powerful core team, with the exception of a couple of names up here. Every single person on this core team has the distinction of having spent a lot of time with Disney. We've all opened projects all over the world. Frankly, we know how to work together well, and we would consider this an A-list team. So here's what we're doing. This reveal right here is the first time anybody's ever seen this new name and new logo, Stephen Davis, in a moment, who, by the way, is our featured presenter tonight. Tonight's going to be a lot less about creative and a lot more about data. But Space Base California turns out to be the winning name for the project. There's a lot of reasons why that is so. That's a logo we're testing out. It probably will change, but we like it so far. This is an immersive destination. You can come for three hours. You can stay for three days, as we'll talk a little more. There are four fundamental components of it. There is a visitor experience. We have been toying with calling that complex alpha. That is the park part of it, if you will. As I think most of you know, there's also a very intense learning opportunity where you can come and stay for three to five days and really go to our version of a space academy, and you'll hear more about that tonight. Space Works is a concept that Steve's been working on, where we may actually partner with some space industry companies to put up fifty to 100,000 square feet of high-tech industrial space to actually house their operations on site, which would also provide us the basis for some apprenticeship and workforce development, which we think is really an important component of this. And then finally, Earth Base is the name we've given to our lodging facility. We're still in the early days, as Stephen Davis will tell you in a minute on the research, but we do believe certainly for our camp and also for some overnight visitors, there is a potential for a lodging operation. The blue boxes on the bottom just fundamentally are the lines of business. Those are the cash centers. That's how you make money in the destination entertainment business. So we have been working hard over the last couple of years, and we've gotten about eighty percent through the experience design plan. And I just want to say a really quick light correction. Tonight is not the delivery of the experience design plan and the research. This is a briefing. We will deliver those documents to you fully by the end of the month. They are, they are quite voluminous, and they'll be coming along. But tonight will be the top line. So we tested about three dozen different concepts for guest experience, and Stephen will tell you in a second how we did that. But basically, the ones that won fell into three groups. One group was this. Folks said, if we get to fly, we're all about that. We really want to fly. So one complex of stuff are all things about putting the guest in a position where they, in some way, shape or form, whether it's simulated or on a drop tower, get the sensation of actually flying in space. The next thing the guests were really clear about was, we want to know what it's really like out there. What's it like in space? How do we, how do we get close to that? You'll hear Steve talk about the popularity of a ride called the Flying Theater. If you've been to Disney's California Adventure and seen Soren Over California, that is an example of the ride technology we would use in this case. That particular system is made by Dynamic Attractions, who's our new partner. But there are other things. The Immersitron is an original idea, never before done, that is kind of like the world's coolest version of a planetarium. So that's the second grouping. The third thing the guests said was, I don't want to walk around and read plaques. I want to get up close, hands-on, hands dirty. I want to touch this stuff. So that could be anything from driving a Mars-like rover. And if you, if you've been out to Can Adam Park recently, and it doesn't take too much to imagine Mars out there. So we're going to think about stuff like that. One really interesting idea is we're working with a group that does an underwater habitat, much like the Neutral Buoyancy Lab at Johnson Space Center in Texas. So again, early days, not all of these will be done, but this is the portfolio of work we've been testing. So I'm going to ask my colleague Kelly now, who's our Vice President of Learning, to come up and talk just a little bit about where we are on our education work.
Hi. As the learning person on the Ideas team, it was up to me to come up with what we call a gold standard education program. First, I'd like to say that, that we talked about, or Bob mentioned, that there's a three-to-five-day overnight program that we're thinking about doing. We hope that we will be doing, and we're still testing some of that in the marketplace. But above and beyond that, everything that we do in this park is going to be instructionally sound and lots of fun. So we know that that's the best way to get anybody, especially kids, but anybody involved in truly incorporating the learning that we want to impart. In order to have that gold standard, kids and others need to be prepared before the event so that they have a conceptual bucket to put the information that we are, that we are giving out to them through the hands-on activities and things like that. So they have this conceptual bucket to put that in so that it makes sense to them. So there's an old saying that telling ain't training. So we want to really prepare them for what the experience is going to be like, and also what it's going to mean. Obviously, it needs to be expertly facilitated. And the other piece of that being prepared is the post-event processing. That's all about allowing people and expecting people, quite frankly, to process what they have been thinking about, what, to think about what they have been presented with and be able to incorporate that. So the changes that happen in the mind and physically in the body are, are not just necessarily automatic. It has to be prompted. So I know you've, you've probably experienced it as a child yourself, and certainly if you have kids and you say, what'd you do at school today? And they say, nothing. When they come here, they won't say nothing. They will have an answer for you. In order to know that, that the learning has happened, we have to have measures, and that learning has to be evaluated in some way. And we will be doing that. That's part of the instructional design process. Collaboration, interaction, very important in a gold standard education program, because if kids aren't collaborating with one another, then they're not building the soft skills that industry needs. And that's so important. And you can ask any employer how important soft skills are, and they will tell you. It's right up there. We want to make sure all of this is appropriately placed in a place on this property. So the facilitators and facilities and support of that is going to be so important, and that will be part of our plan. will be part of our plan. The core three-day program that will happen on this property is, the, the training, I mean, excuse me, the market analysis, you'll see from Stephen's report here in a few minutes, that we got some really great surprises. First of all, we knew we wanted to go out there and pull kids in from the school systems, whether they're elementary, middle, or high school. We didn't know that we were going to have such an amazing response from family groups. People said, "Yeah, we, we want our kids to go, but we want to go with them." And then others said, "Well, we don't have kids. Can we come too?" So, the answer is yes, all of the above. So, the program is going to include these three main groups of people and we will create a core program. Day one, possibly, as Bob was talking about, the flight test, the rover course, and the rocket range, that would happen possibly in day one. Day two, the hab or the facility where the labs and the classrooms are, where will become an outpost, if you will, whether it's on Mars or, or on the moon or wherever. That's going to be happening mostly on day two. And day three, the planetary, planetary exploration and graduation. So, yes, you've, you've done this now. Now you get to, to graduate and you, and you get your badge along with your crew shirt that shows that you're part of the team.
So, up until now, it's been a lot of fun creating this. We've got some great ideas and it's not that fun time is over, but there comes a point in every one of these projects where you have to ground your creative in what's really going to work. And that requires a really, a really deep understanding of the market. I won't drag you through the model on the left, but that dark circle up there and all those buckets are the process we have used. We've come all the way over the top, those top three bubbles, and we are now entering in the piece that says guest analytics. Those six criteria on the right are the things that have to happen for a destination entertainment project of any kind to be successful. And the way we figure that out is to do very, very rigorous market research. And so, it's my pleasure to hand the clicker over to Stephen Davis from our colleagues at Integrated Insight. And really, the purpose of tonight is all about Stephen briefing you on what that, the market data says. And I'll give you a sneak preview. It will work. He's going to tell you that it will work and better than that, he's going to tell you why we know it will work. It's all yours.
Counsel, Mayor, thank you for having me here. I'm really excited to be here. So, just to tell you a little bit about who I am and who we are and who our firm is. So, we were brought in as outside consultants to help to take this idea, this, these concepts, this design plan that Bob has, and to actually put it to the test and see if it pencils. I can tell you that our job is to come in and relay a level, a layer, a layer of reality onto these types of projects. It's a lot of fun to come up with great ideas. My role is to come into the room and to tell them whether it actually is a good idea, whether your consumers actually like it, whether there's enough people to attend it, that you can actually drive the revenue that you're going to need to support a profitable venture. And so, with that in mind, just to let you have that kind of context, and in everything that we do and everything I'm going to show you tonight, we have a really core aspect of our, our principles. And that's, we lead with a consumer. And that's why I'm going to talk about consumer research and why that's so critical. Our team, just so you know, our company was founded by two former Disney executives, Joni Newkirk and Scott Sanders. They oversaw collectively global Disney parks and resorts, pricing, revenue strategy, a consumer research, pro forma development, everything from a new restaurant to a new theme park. And a lot of the learnings that we took from that and our experience, we take a very similar approach to other types of destinations. That doesn't mean we work with Disney's. We work with all sorts of types of clients across a very wide spectrum, from tiny corn maze operators in rural America up to universal parks and resorts worldwide. I think it's important for you to know, we've also worked with other space-related activities and experiences, so Spaceport America, Kennedy Space Center, and Spaceport Sweden are three of those. This is just a smattering of some of our clients. Now, how we do what we do. So, today, we're going to talk about these first three bubbles. And, and we're going to talk about some numbers and a little bit of math. And I'm, I'm the math guy and we'll, we'll try not to get too in the weeds on it, but I think it's important for you to understand our process and our approach and how we reach these results. And so, we start high-level marketing competitive assessment. The first thing we did was we came, we looked at the area. What is Lompoc? Who's coming to Lompoc? Who lives in Lompoc now? Who lives nearby Lompoc? How do tourists act in the area? How do they flow through the area? To try to start to understand a market potential. And all of that information we gather, we then are able to use that to understand demand and eventually economic inputs downstream. We take the designs and the concepts and the ideas, we take them in images and some text format, and we take those directly to the consumer. So, what I'm telling you today is not my opinion. What I'm telling you today is what the consumer said, what the potential visitors, people who live in this region, people who are tourists coming to the central California coast, I'm telling you what they thought about these concepts. And then we take that information and we have an approach to demand sizing. It starts with the big market picture and whittles all the way down to people we actually think will show up and pay and come through the gate. We're also doing some work around capacity planning. You know, it's really important for these things. You don't build the church for Easter Sunday, is the saying that we often try to employ. We want to make sure it's right-sized. It's not too big, it's not too small, it's got the right flow. So, we'll provide some input on that. But specifically, as it relates to the demand sizing today, we're going to be talking about that visitor experience, as kind of they alluded to. We're still fleshing out some of the space-based concepts and the accommodations because we think there's an opportunity for programming there that can be really robust and differentiated across some of the segments. And I'll mention why we think that. But I'm going to start here, now that you know a little bit about who we are and our process, around the concept appeal. So, you saw the concepts that, that Bob talked about. We took those out into research. We fielded a quantitative study back in the back half of October. The way that we do this is we work with online panel samples. We've done this for dozens of clients. This is a standard practice for us. This survey completed, surveys, was nearing the eight-hundred number. Now, we talked to more people than that about potentially getting into the survey, but we use some screeners to make sure that the people we're talking to are truly qualified market. I don't want to go make a decision about whether I'm going to build something by talking to someone who's never going to show up. And so, it's really important for us to understand who those people are and then the size of who those people are so we can understand potential attendance for this experience. So, we talked to people between eighteen and sixty-five. We talked to residents, so people who live both in the Lompoc, Santa Barbara area and within seventy-five miles. So, you know, easy to get in the car and think about for kind of a long day trip. We also talked to tourists who are visiting the coastal California region. And so, that's important for us because we want to model the different behaviors and the, the different potential for demand at those detailed level. And so, that's really critical for us to be able to talk to all of those cohorts. We talked to families, we talked to non-families, families with different demographics and groups of children, a mix of race, ethnicity, gender, to really represent that interested population. And then these all people who got into the survey, completed the survey, have a seven out of ten-plus interest in space, space-related activities, attractions, museums, or, and, or they have the ability, the interest in coming to the coastal California region. So, again, they're a qualified market of people that we're talking about, that are giving us all of this information. So, I mean, the good news is, and, and I deliver bad news all the time, but the good news is, on this one, nine out of ten out of ten individuals, so this is fifty-three percent of our total sample, we showed them these concept images, we showed them this text, we stepped back and we said, "Okay, how appealing do you find this, this project kind of overall, right?" Fifty-three percent gave it a nine to ten out of ten appeal rating. And what was wonderful is we saw really high appeal across different types of segments, so families, residents, tourists. And then we looked specifically at a cohort of people we're calling kind of our avid fans, our avid space fans. And what's interesting is, is there's certainly a group of people in this region and tourists coming into this region who do have this interest in space. I think the, the space base being here, the Space Force Base being here in the area and that becoming more ingrained in the culture of the area. And I think, like Steve said, this is the future. This is, it's not the future, it's the now. This is what's happening and there's a lot of excitement around that and around opportunities to experience that. Not only do we see really strong appeal, but we also saw really strong intent to visit. So, again, we asked a very long survey. The survey lasted around like fifteen, twenty minutes, which is totally standard for this. A number of questions. What I'm going to give you today are kind of the top-line responses to give you an understanding of really what was coming out at the top that's important to know. But forty-nine percent of that total sample saying they definitely will visit. What I like to tell people and remind them is that we don't all like the same things. So, if I ever put something into research and somebody said a hundred percent definitely will, I'd have a lot of questions. I think even tonight, we've heard people that like different things. But overwhelmingly, high appeal, high intent to visit. And all of that information is something that we use in our models to understand demand. Why Space Base? Well, once we showed them the concepts and they had seen and read the experience, we said, "Hey, here's some possible names for this. You know, which ones do you think you like best? Which ones best explain this experience?" Space Base came out on the top. This isn't always the case. A lot of times, it's all over the place. This was a great one, that it was very clear. Space Base really resonated with consumers. And so, when you've seen that and saw that kind of first run at a potential naming and branding, there's a reason why, why we've moved into that direction. We not only ask about broadly the experience kind of as a project, but also we ask about individual elements. And so, some of those elements that you saw Bob talk about, they gave us to those, we showed them specifically and said, "Okay, now looking at each of these things, tell me how appealing they are." Well, all of the elements we looked at, broad appeal. The ones that came up at the top end of that scale were the flying things, as Bob mentioned. So, the Flying Theater, the Flight Test, but also some of the Exploration Station. Even though relatively lower on the scale was the Range Observation Plaza, still a lot of interest and excitement about that. I've, I've been to the site myself, was able to go out today. I think it's a perfect fit for range observation. So, I think the, the fit of the experience and the appeal within the area feels like a really great kind of composition in terms of the way that, that it fits into the, the region. Kelly mentioned education. And so, this is not just saying this. We wanted to specifically, within the research, make sure that consumers felt the same way. And so, after we had explained the concept to them, we show them a series of statements and we say, "Hey, tell me how, how well you think this describes what you just saw." And they look at that on a scale of one to seven. These percentages that you see here in the lower left-hand screen are the percent who said seven out of seven describes. And one of the things that rose right up to the top was that it was a place for learning and enrichment. And again, this is one we put in, we were keeping an eye on, and this was wonderful to see, that really people connected those dots. They saw it and they tied the dots to, to learning and enrichment. Of course, it's unique, it's a place to use your imagination, it's a place to explore. But the fact that learning was rooted in the experience was really, I know, important for the team. It's something that they wanted us to test and it's what we saw. And you know, I think this, this term, this edutainment, is something we've seen in the industry to work really well and can really be engaging. And not only that, is, I wanted to just highlight a few verbatims here. So, when we ask around appeal, we, we do allow people the ability to follow that up and say, "Hey, okay, well, what, why did you give it that rating?" And so, for people who had pretty strong appeal, these were a few I thought were interesting, just to call to your attention. So, makes kids learn and have fun at the same time, so people specifically identifying it within their kids. I like, it's, it's interesting, it's immersive, it's flexible kind of offerings and exhibits. Learning is a lifelong pursuit for all of us. So, those kind of lifelong learners, really seeing that this is an educational space. And, and I know that that was important to Steve, it was important to Bob, and so, we wanted to be able to test that directly. We also asked a series of questions about kind of how people would think about their visit. And so, these are responses from two different questions here, kind of separated down that line. But what we saw is on the right, if you were to visit, how would you describe your trip? We saw about twenty percent of people said, "I, I plan to do this." We think about this as a destination trip. "I'm going to come and I'm going to do this just to do this Space Base California." We saw another large portion of people said, "I'm going to do this, but I'm going to do it as part of a larger coastal California trip." And so, this is something that they're going to make as part of a broader destination vacation as they travel through the area. Now, it's important to try to understand, okay, is this going to replace something? Is it an addition to other activities in the area? And I think that this has the ability to potentially be kind of a rising tide, lift all boats type of a situation as it relates to tourism. And so, people saying that this is probably something they would tack on, they would plan to do this in addition to other local activities. So, this is just a little bit about kind of who is likely to attend and some over-indexing that I think is, is kind of worth calling out. The percentages that you're seeing here on this particular table, essentially, these are the makeup of the people who told me that they definitely will attend. So, in total, anybody said they definitely will attend, it tended to be about fifty-eight percent of those people were resident, forty-two percent were tourist. Now, we can take that definitely will and we can specifically look at avid space fans who we know are probably an easier sell to convert into an attendee. And we can also look at sweet spot individuals. Sweet spot are people who we say have a ten out of ten appeal rating. That's important because we want to understand your portion of demand from a sweet spot because, "I really love it, I think it's awesome, it's a lot easier to sell you a ticket." And so, that sweet spot or respondents tends to skew a little bit harder than the total towards tourists, which was great to see. It also skews a little bit harder towards families and then really strong intent around past California visitors and then those space attraction visitors specifically, of course, coming in to that bucket. So, that's just some of the highlights from the research. Full, full report, of course, pending, but we wanted to be able to take you, of course, through the high levels and the top lines, given that we just, we just came out of the field here fairly recently. So, we're going to now move into kind of this all about the numbers. And I'm going to start with just kind of our demand sizing. And so, the way we think about opportunity is it starts with demand. From that demand, we move into revenue estimates, pro forma evaluations, understanding supportable investment. But in all of these things that we do, just in the way that we would advise on operating or the way that we would advise on pricing strategy, we lead with the consumer. And so, we want to think about it from a consumer perspective. And so, this is just a visual in terms of how we think about our modeling as it relates to, to demand. And so, we, we start at the top with the total target market, total market, that's your total population, anybody who lives within seventy-five miles, anybody who's a tourist to the Santa Barbara area. We then qualify those. We say our qualified market now is those residents and those tourists. And we apply an income qualification. That's not to say you're not going to get visitors from below a seventy-five-thousand-dollar household income. We just know from this experience that there's certain level of income that's likely to be the case, particularly for families, for a type of visitation. And so, for us, to feel confident in the numbers, well, let's look specifically at that segment. Again, that's not to say you're not going to get outside of that, but as we get confident around demand and what our estimates are, we want to look specifically at a highly qualified market. And then, we look at a qualified target market. So, we're able to take all of those learnings we used from the research around all the people that we talked to before they became fully into the survey and were part of that seven-hundred-and-seventy-six completes, I noted, that qualified. So, they're in the market, they're income-qualified, and they have an interest in this type of experience. They have an interest in visiting space attractions or museums. And then from that base, we can start to apply some factors. And we can say, "All right, that, that's my group. That's the group I'm really trying to go talk to, that's the group I'm really trying to go target and to pull into this experience." Well, I know to have to come to an experience, I have to be aware of it. This is one of the ones that's not always as intuitive for, for people, particularly sometimes on the creative and design side, is that you have a great idea, but not everybody's aware of it. And you have to create awareness. And that's really critical to your strategy. And so, we're not going to assume that everyone in the qualified target market knows about you. We're going to assume that you're going to have to create some level of awareness through marketing and strategy. And that'll probably look different in the way you approach residents versus day trippers versus overnighters. And once we have that estimate, then we calibrate our demand by looking specifically at the percent of people who said, "Yes, I'm definitely going to do this." And we calibrate that for a willingness to pay and a follow-through on those stated intent. And so, that's a lot to say that we really start high-level and then we're leveraging the research, we're leveraging the insights directly from the consumer to come in to get an estimate for attendance that we can feel confident in and that what we would say is, we can feel good with as we look for applying then those attendance numbers to a revenue base to understand the, the potential and how this pencils from a financial perspective. So, here's a page full of numbers and I'm not going to make you go through every one, but it's important for us to, to lay out our process and to provide this transparency so that you can see what's coming out of the research, what comes out of the secondary available information. And so, for example, residents, we pull all of this information from the Census Bureau, the total market size, we look at the income qualifications. We use a tool to actually drop a pin and say, "Give me everyone who lives within seventy-five miles." Okay, now, give me everyone who lives within seventy-five miles that has this amount of an income. What do they look like? What's their family composition? How many kids between five and 17? And so we do all of that work to build into our models and then to leverage the research to really get to that calibrated demand number. And you can see that it is truly a funnel. So we're talking a total market within the resident and the tourist to the region of 8.3 million, working down to a calibrated demand number of 228,000 before considering daytime field trippers. And so that school group number you see down there, that bottom line of 65,000, that does not include the Space Base camp and the hotel accommodations. So again, today we're talking about specifically that visitor center experience that Bob noted. And so on a penetration of that, remember that qualified target market, my people, the ones I'm talking to directly, it's really only about 3%. Now, you do better on the residence, which makes sense. Residents, I got 365 days to go talk to those people, to target those people, to give them an opportunity to come and to experience. The Space Base tourist, always a little bit harder to get them, they're only in market one or two days. So your penetration of those are gonna be much lower. And again, consumers telling you this, not necessarily my opinion. We provide the science, we provide the data, and we provide the analytics to come in and give you what we really believe is going to be the case and what we can feel confident in and put our credibility on the line. Now, once we get those demand numbers in place, we're then looking at revenue potential. Our revenue, the way that we model revenue is again, consumer-driven. We think about it from a behavioral standpoint. We know that people will buy tickets, of course, if they're gonna come. Not all of them are gonna pay full price. Now, I had about 70% of my definitely will say, well, I expect I might have to pay 70, 75 bucks for this. They may not be willing to pay all of that price point, though many of them were. But I don't think everyone's gonna have to pay marquee price, right? We know that as pricing strategy, as we work through these types of projects, you're gonna do discounts, you're gonna do promotions, it'll be cheaper for residents. We know those 65,000 schoolchildren that we're expecting to come annually, they're certainly not gonna pay full price. You'll have that at a very discounted field trip rate. And then when people are there, they're gonna purchase food and beverage, they're gonna purchase retail. We don't assume everyone buys food and beverage, we don't assume everyone buys retail. We leverage our experience based on consumer behaviors to really try to model that, to create that consumer-driven approach to understanding revenue. And in our process where we're at now, having done the fielding, having done the high-level feasibility, is now to really try to go in and understand the programmatic elements to really flesh out a robust pro forma. We're expecting an operating margin at stabilization of around 25%. That could reach up into the 30s once you really get this thing cranking and rolling in future years. And the goal will be to satisfy a desired 20% return on equity. Of course, we build financial models that will work with Steve and Bob and say, what are you, you know, what are the terms? What are you looking at? This is what you can afford, and this is what you can afford to build. And so that's what we're working towards. And so all of those estimates then, now that we feel confident on a kind of an attendance number for a stabilized base, around 290K, an average total guest spend of $65. Again, that's gonna range very different between a resident and a tourist who's coming in. And it's really easy for them to amortize the cost of this across a broader California vacation. And we're able to then leverage all of that down into an economic impact. And so specifically what I'm gonna talk about today to give you the high level on, again, is the visitor experience itself. Doesn't include the Space Base camp, it doesn't include any hotel accommodations. And it also wouldn't include the one-time impact from construction. So you're looking at an annual impact number based on the annual revenue expectations that we have. We leverage the M-Plan model. The M-Plan, that group has had over four decades of experience in this type of work and providing these types of tools, they're the leading provider of economic impact data. And so we leverage that. It's a very intuitive way to think about understanding a type of experience like this, the type of attendance it would drive, the type of revenue it would drive on an annualized basis, to then to understand the kind of downstream impact, supportable jobs, and then the tax, tax revenue that would be expected to Lompoc in the Santa Barbara County area. So kind of the high level here, the answer on the opportunity. So I talked you through the 290,000 visitors annually, that stabilized attendance, generating 19 million plus in annual revenues. Our economic impact analysis suggests that's about 290 jobs incremental, around 450K plus in tax revenue to this in the Santa Barbara County. Total economic impact, you can think about it as a GDP number essentially, is 35 million. Again, excludes the Space Base camp experience, excludes the potential onsite accommodations. Most of this impact is direct. And that's what we would expect to see in this type of an investment. You're gonna, most of your jobs are right here because you're just gonna have to support the labor, you're gonna have to support the operation, most of the impact is direct. There's not a whole lot of new supply chain, right? There is new induced business in terms of new businesses that would open to support it. But most of the economic impact that you would see from this type of an experience, attraction, would really come in form of a direct impact, and you'd see a lot of that at the local level. Of course, our model allows us to look at tax revenues at the federal, the California, and then the county level. And so that's kind of a midpoint range that you can see there based on our estimates. And a little bit of, in the weeds, but the NAICS code we use for this, that we assume is in the museum, the Heritage Zoo, recreational services. We looked at it both for that and an attraction. It's a little more conservative to look at it this way, to be fair, which I think this is more in the realm of the way the economics would work. And so that's the right way to look at this as it refers to economic impact. I know that is quite a lot. The last thing I'll leave you with, and I know it is getting late, and I really appreciate, again, your time and you guys hanging out for this and the opportunity to speak to you. But we talked about the Space Base camp, and we know that that's a critical component of this. And I think that's something that people want to see and can provide a lot of value for Lompoc. But what's interesting about it and what's worth really digging into and we're looking at is that this could be more than just for kids and school-aged children, right? This could be something that would draw in families who would come and stay overnight in the area. There are non-families who would be interested in doing this, kind of as an adult-only experience. And so again, I think the passion for space, the passion for space exploration, there's clearly a cohort in the region and tourists who come to the region who are interested in that. And so that's an attractive experience, and that's something that we're currently kind of under development. We'll take the exact same approach to sizing this as we do that. We know that you want to do these things the right way. You want to get them right the first time, you want to build it right the first time. We've learned from doing these, from start to finish implementation. And so all of those learnings, all those things that we do, all that kind of time-tested techniques are really built into what we do here and the service that we've provided to Steve and Bob and team. And so I'm gonna leave it at that. I'm sure you guys have plenty of questions. I think Steve was just gonna, was gonna close us off here though momentarily.
So, well, so thanks very much. So we have a little bit more wood to chop. I mean, so what you saw there was a lot of the concept and feasibility study, and we have a little bit more to do on that. So that's a deliverable and along with the experience design plan by the end of the month. We're asking tonight for an extension of our exclusivity so we can negotiate the DDA. You know, we'd like to see four to six months, we think that's, that would be hugely helpful. Then we need to go out and start talking to people, and we've already started that, about strategically investing. And that's really a conversation between San Diego and all the way out to Europe. Where I have a house in London, I spend a lot of time there and I travel throughout that whole region. And there's a lot of people that would be interested in this kind of a project, and we have a really interesting project. We also need to start chopping wood on the environmental impact report and start thinking about how we do go about schematic design. And the thing that's not up there is, of course, we need to kind of get over the hurdle with the consultant as to, you know, some of these, some of these financial numbers. And on the first of November, I had written a letter to the city that said, hey, look, we don't think we need to, but if there's any issue, you know, we'll write a check for $35 to $100,000 if necessary to kind of just get us over the hump on that issue. So I think we have one more thing for you, so it's a short video. Oh, I pushed the button. Which one? Oh, sorry.
As experienced designers, we usually talk about not designing from the ground up, but designing from the guest out. That said, this piece of ground is an extraordinary palette upon which we can really paint an amazing future experience. Lompoc is unique in the world, sitting in the smack middle of the California coastal tourism corridor with extraordinary view shed into Vandenberg Space Force Base. Well, if you look at where we are today, space travel is no longer the domain of the few or exotic science fiction. Living outside Earth's atmosphere or human exploration on Mars is where we're going, and soon. Whether you visit for a day or you spend a week with us, in-depth, hands-on learning, we are here to entertain, educate, and inspire the next generation of human space travelers. Imagine experiencing a high-G launch or driving a rover across simulated Martian terrain. This immersive training center is an early first step in how we as a species prepare for living, working, and succeeding out in space. This is a triple win. It's a win for our guests, it's a win for the economic development of the Central Coast, and it's a win for the planet.
Well, there you go. So happy to take your questions or whatever you'd like to do next. Thank you.
All right, any questions for staff or the presentation? All right, then we'll go to public comment. If you would like to speak on this item, you may come forward. The podium is here, you have three minutes on the topic. If you'd like to call in, it's 805-875-8201, 805-875-8201. Go ahead.
Good evening, Dr. Debbie Blow, interim superintendent of the Lompoc Unified School District. Of course, I'm speaking about education, because that's what I know and live. And I have recently learned about this concept, and I just would like to say that I feel it has great potential from an educational perspective. Both what it could bring for students, this could be something students could do, kind of like the nature experiences that they have, the science camps that they now attend, as well as I think it has great potential to work with our teachers in helping teach math and science. So I just wanted to share that. Again, I'm speaking from the educational perspective. Thank you.
Good evening, Steve Bridge. I was involved very early with this Western Space Park Museum concept. I was on the board of the California Space Authority. In fact, I helped put that monument that's up on the hill. And all I'd like to point out is, we, the city, got that land for a space camp, for an educational site. So, separate from the details of the memorandums and all of that, this is consistent with the legacy that we put in place when we got that land transferred from the federal to the city. So some of you weren't here, I know some of you were, but I just thought I'd point that out.
Good evening. My name is Jim Price, I'm retired military. Before I retired, I used to work out at Slick Five out of South Vandenberg on the Scout missile. And what my question is, I think this is a fantastic project, if we could get this thing gone. But I wanted to find out if there is gonna be room in all of these buildings, if this thing goes through, for models of scout, of not only the scout missile, but other type missiles that used to be launched from Vandenberg Air Force Base for many years.
Hello? Irina Malkmus, freelance art teacher. I live in solving, mom of three kids. And I would say that I prefer to spend our money here in Lompoc and support the locals than I fly to San Francisco with my kids because they're interested in space. And there's, in San Francisco, very updated observatory compared to Los Angeles. So why should I spend all this money there if I can spend it here? Plus, I teach after-school, in after-school program in different schools, Christian Academy and other schools. And the most popular projects are to paint animals or do something about space. So I see already high interests. And for our locals also, we probably will not stay at the hotel there. But if it will be like space spa or something for, you know, for moms, for dads, it will be amazing. Not only for kids, for everybody. And how cool and proud we will be just to say we're from Lompoc or from solving next to this, you know, amazing place. Thank you.
How you guys doing? My name is Miles Johnson, and I have a family of six. And I just wanted to say that I recently learned about this project. And I think that if it goes through, it'd be great for the community, it would create a lot of jobs. And we frequently take day trips to a lot of other places in the surrounding area. And I think that, you know, we would really like to start going to more local events and stuff. And I think that something like this would be great. Thank you.
Lynn White again. I've been a real estate broker in town for 30 years, but before that, I was a rocket scientist. I don't want to say how many years ago that was, but with a degree in math and computer science, did missile guidance for the Titans when they were the ones that put up the spy satellites before you could talk about that. So it was a long time ago. I still run outside when the big missiles go off to see them. This is just so exciting to me. And I think, like we've talked about, and the council has talked about so many times, who are we? Who do we want to be? This is such a fine project for something like that. And these people have their stuff together. It was different councils before, this is about the third group, I think, that was come along. I don't remember exactly the first one, they didn't bring it to fruition. Then we had that crazy lady in the boots who spoke the foreign language, and that didn't come to fruition. But these people have their stuff together. They've done their homework, they have good credentials. I think they can make it work, and I think you guys ought to give them the time they need to bring it to fruition.
Susan Gallagher, I think I agree that we need to give them the time. It's a great project, this is what our town needs, and we need to make it happen.
Hello, good evening. Karen Hardwig, I grew up here. I left, like many, went to college, proceeded a career, and now I'm back. I'd really like to see this town, I love it. I didn't really appreciate it while I was growing up here, but now I'm loving it. Thank you for all your hard work and everything you do here at the city council. And this is my first meeting, so I'm one of those that's working usually and not able to come. But what I wanted to say, this is a very exciting project. I've had the honor of seeing this presentation through the museum. And I'd like to see Lompoc other than a pot shop place. Nothing against marijuana, but I think that we could really use a positive impact with our little beautiful town of Lompoc. Thank you.
Hi, Michael Donahue. We gotta give credit to Bob Lingle too. I think his ghost is in this, in this meeting tonight because I know he was high on getting something done. And I think the timing that Steve and the team are taking advantage of is perfect. Because, I don't know about you guys, but between the web telescope, those images are amazing. We got the Artemis project, we've got Mars coming. And we, for heaven's sakes, we have to compete. Our kids need to compete in terms of STEM. The Russians are in front of us, the Indians are in front of us. And anything that inspires, that educates, and entertains- And anything that inspires, that educates, and entertains is great. I love this juxtaposition, when you spoke about, when Steve spoke about the, being a destination. What's great is we got the mission already. What a perfect trip to have the old and the new. So, you guys, I know that you're about making good decisions, and this is a great opportunity for Lompoc to do something that I think is, is in keeping with where we want to go in the future. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Chris Levine. My wife Kelly and I over here, we're local business owners. Also, am a contractor on the base. And looking at the launch rate that we will be seeing here at Vandenberg over the next couple of years is pretty significant. And it's amazing to watch all the cars lined up on Ocean and leave, and there's nothing for them to do. They're coming from Santa Barbara, they line up there, and it is drive out. And it'd be great to have a place for them to stay here overnight, or something along those lines. I'll make a second point is, retired military. We were stationed at Cape Canaveral for seven years. At Cape Canaveral, there was Orlando, and there was many families that went to Orlando to go to Disney. And while they're there, traveling from all around the world, they had two beaches to go to while they're there. They had Daytona Beach, or they had Cocoa Beach. And Cocoa Beach is where Kennedy Space Center is, and where the theme park is. And there is a great tourist attraction for people coming from around the world to go to Disney, to go to Cocoa Beach, to go to Kennedy Space Center, and maybe catch a lawn. So, I think for those two things, for sure, take under consideration this project that they're doing here. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Susan Hutzbeth. And I'd like to see you give them the time they need to gather the information and all that is required of them. Sounds like a great concept, and as a senior citizen, I would like to participate in that, if it comes to fruition. So, thank you. Please consider giving them the added time.
Hi, my name is David Teakott. I'd like to reiterate that it's a perfect time for this. Elon Musk is building a rocket to go to Mars. It's completely reusable. 400 feet tall, 30 feet wide. It can lift, has the capacity of a 747, can lift 150 tons. And he plans to build 1,000 of them to go to Mars. Also, I think it'd be great for the city, for the tourist attraction and everything. And I think we should improve our beach, so they could not only go to the space camp, but also to the beach, and enjoy our beach.
I'm David Hutzbeth, and I agree with the gentleman that spoke before me, is that that's why I came up, is that I think that we should also focus on opening up our beach area and improving our ocean park, and having that as an accessory venue for other people as they come to these different activities. And supporting this blue dot, I think would be beneficial to the community, as well as educationally based. And so, I would support it.
Hello, Mayor, City Council. I'm a local resident. I have young children. I think this is a great project. I don't know how many times throughout my history of attending these meetings, where I've heard different residents come out and cry out for such a project. It's here. We have a great opportunity today to continue down the path. I'd like to encourage you strongly to continue down the path and provide whatever is necessary for this team to continue on down the path. I think this would be a great asset to our community, both economically and educationally, as well as social-economically for some of, a lot of our lesser advantaged kids that live in this community. The ability to have this work in conjunction with the local school district, STEM, would be just a great thing for a lot of the kids here in this community. So, it has my full support. Thank you.
Well, good evening, Mayor, council members, members of the public, staff. My name is Frances Romero. I live in Guadalupe, and I'm here tonight as an individual. My day job, I'm a land use consultant. And the first thing I want to say is, this is one of the first meetings I've been to in probably two decades, where there's not been one dissenting voice commenting on a project. Somewhat of a miracle, I will say. Very rare in today's world. But the other thing I want to say is, I grew up with a father that worked at Jet Propulsion Laboratory in Goldstone. I was born and raised in Barstow, a place that was very far from a lot of the cool things that other people get to enjoy. I had the unique privilege to be able to go out to Goldstone, to the tracking station, see the tracking... I'm totally blanking right now. But anyway, to see the station, to see the models, to see where Ice Station Zebra was filmed. Not every kid got to do stuff like this. Space is something that has inspired people for years. My father was born and raised in a village of 464 people. He was born in 1933. And he was voted most likely to go to the moon in high school, with a graduating class of 12. He spent an entire career working for Jet Propulsion Lab, doing just that, tracking the West Coast space programs, working with Vandenberg Air Force Base. Kids need something to be able to look forward to. Looking at a phone, playing video games, is not real life. A project like this will provide an opportunity for kids to connect technology to jobs. We want the next generation in Lompoc and in this region to have good jobs. And we want them to see the connection that technology and learning provides for that. Everybody tonight has said things that I absolutely agree with, and I hope that you've heard them. Projects like this don't happen overnight. They take time. And your community has a unique opportunity to deliver something to this region, this state, and to the nation that will put Lompoc on the map. So, I hope tonight you'll agree that this group deserves extra time, and that what they've done to date is phenomenal. So, thank you so much for your service, and I look forward to the additional public comment and your deliberation tonight.
Ken Austin, Lompoc resident, mayor, council members. Going back to my days at the Chamber of Commerce back in 2011, been involved with many of the groups that have been trying to make this project happen. And for whatever reasons, usually it was money, they have not been able to make it happen. I've known Steve for quite a while now, and I've always believed that if anybody could make this project work, he could. So, I really believe that you should give them the extra time they can to raise the additional funds to make this project happen, because the benefits to our community go way beyond four months or six months of extra time of letting them prove they can make this project happen, because I believe they can. So, please, I support you giving them the extra time to make that happen. Thank you.
I did hear the phone ring a few times. Go ahead and start the phone call-ins. Was there only one person on the line?
There were a few that called in, I think hung up. So, I don't know if you wanted to give it a few minutes?
Good evening. You're live in the Lompoc City Council Chamber. You have three minutes to give your public comment. Please go ahead.
Fantastic. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. This is Cindy Eisen from Caldwell Banker Select Realty. I'm really excited about this project, and you can tell from the presentations tonight that this is the most creative, professional, thoughtful group that are most qualified to bring this to our town. They're striving to do great things for Lompoc. All we need to do is get behind them and let them do their incredible innovative work. So, please extend the time for the exclusive negotiating period. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. You're live in the Lompoc City Council Chamber. You have three minutes to give your public comment. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Ken Switzer. I'm a local real estate agent for 30 years, and I've been involved a little behind the scenes on the project for many years, consulting on real estate and other matters. And I just want to speak to two things. One, I think the timing of the last leg of this, which is the negotiation of the DDA, probably should have always been a separate time after the work experience and other research and funding was done. So, I kind of look at it as those two milestones are now done, or just about done with the research part. Looks like most of it's finished up by tonight, maybe a little more to go this month. So, the negotiations should ensue from that point. So, I kind of see it as a logical staggering of time anyway. So, hopefully, there's no issue in giving the four to six months in addition, since the other two parts of it, the funding and the research, are accomplished almost completely now. So, there's that point. I also want to speak to being behind the scenes a little bit on this. The tremendous amount of hours, not just hundreds of hours, thousands of hours, maybe tens of thousands, that people have put in on this project, not just the incredible work by Steve, the CEO, and Bob Allen, his team, but many other people in the community who've really supported this and volunteered their time to try to help put this together in the form that's coming together now. So, just in case the council members or members of the public weren't aware of the amount of effort, it's been tremendous, and should be a benefit for the people of Lompoc for many years to come. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. You're live in the Lompoc City Council Chamber. You have three minutes to give your public comment. Please go ahead.
All right. Thank you for your time. This is Kami Atkins. I'm a Lompoc business and property owner. I've actually lived here since the 80s. I raised both of my children here. So, calling as a, as a parent, when they were young, I volunteered with their classrooms. And for both of them, after all the fundraising that their classrooms would do, we would travel out of the area to go see any sort of science camp. And that's just a shame. In the last 15 or so years, it really hasn't changed at all. So, I strongly urge the council chiefs to work with Pale Blue Dot, give them the extension of time that they need to, you know, get this project moving forward. In my opinion, it's not going to be just great for the community, but specifically for our children in the future. We're trying to offer them right here in Lompoc. So, thank you for your time, everyone.
Thank you. Okay. Did we have any written communications on this item?
Yes, ma'am. We received, I believe, five separate emails. It was provided to council, to staff, and there are copies in the lobby, and it was placed on the city's website.
Thank you so very much. All right, seeing no one else rise and no one else call in, we will close public comment on this item and bring it back to council for discussion.
Mayor.
Yes.
Before the council enters discussion, I wanted to clarify something. I was under the impression that tonight would be the presentation of the concept and feasibility study and experience design plan under the MOU. What we learned during the presentation by Pale Blue Dot is that this is not the presentation of the, at least not the experience design plan tonight. So, what that means is, the next step in the MOU is not the negotiation of the disposition development agreement, but it is the official presentation of the experience design plan, and perhaps concept and feasibility study as well. The deadline for that is December 31 of this year, so they do still have time to present that. The MOU requires that the experience design plan and concept feasibility study be presented to the city council at a public meeting. So, if this was not the presentation of that tonight, that means that we will, the next step would be to present that plan at a public meeting to the city council. So, just take that into account in your deliberations tonight, that there is going to be an extra step before we get to negotiating the MOU. So, we would be still getting the final determination on the fundraising, whether that compliance has been met, and then also receiving the final concept and feasibility study and experience design plan, presenting that to the city council at a public meeting. And then we would go into negotiations on the disposition development agreement.
Thank you for that clarity. I had made that note during the presentation. And given your statement about receiving the information on December 2, and our consultant not being able to finish evaluating the additional documentation, I would ask if the group would be able to present the actual plan and feasibility study at the next council meeting, so we could actually make a clear decision. I know you have till the 31st. We are also closed that week. So, it would behoove you to get it in sooner than while we're out for holidays. I would like to see the rest of our independent consultants' evaluation of the financials that were submitted. So, I would be happy to continue this to the 20th, but I don't know that the group could actually provide the other half at that meeting.
I understand that you're asking them to present the plan by, on December 20?
Yeah.
The MOU requires them to submit the plan by December 20. Doesn't necessarily mean that the council presentation has to be by the end of the year, but if you're asking them to do it at the next meeting, then that's completely fine.
Well, I'm asking simply because of one of the requests is to get a continuation. And so, there's a portion that we still need from the first requirement, and that the second requirement actually have the plan presented to us. Not just a presentation of what the plan is likely to contain, but the actual plan. And I know that they have till the 31st to deliver on the plan, which means they have till January to come make it back and make that presentation. But at that point, their ENA has expired if we don't give them some sort of extension. So, there's two options. There's either continue it to the 20th, and on the 20th, we have more consultant information simply on the financials, and no completed plan to potentially look at and evaluate. Or we just do the evaluation and decide in that moment if we're willing to wait a month and wait to see the presentation late January? Because my guess is it wouldn't be on January 3?
January 17.
January 17. So, that's something for council to discuss. I, if nothing else, would continue this to the 20th, simply to see our consultants' evaluations of the financial, but that would be my recommendation. Councilmember Vega?
Yeah. I kind of, a couple of technicalities here. I think that they brought their A-game here to give us our presentation. I understand the guidelines with the MOU. I don't see any reason for us not to allow the extension, regardless of the stipulations in the MOU, unless the city attorney can tell us why not. Because we have the holidays coming up, we have December 20. To give an extra four months, regardless, they still have to comply with this part, I believe, to stay in compliance. So, maybe the city attorney can kind of tell us why not we can't do this. I understand that we're trying to cross our Ts and dot our Is to the letter of the MOU. But maybe you could tell us why we could not allow the extension regardless?
You can. You can do a four-month extension right now, or a six-month extension if the council wanted to. You can. You can do a four-month extension right now or a six-month extension if the council wanted to. But you could, if you wanted, also approve a shorter extension or bring it back in December, December 20th to further consider the information that we have at that time. All of those options are on the table for the council.
Okay, I got you. I'd like to make the motion that we grant the four-month extension and also they can bring back their design plan under the MOU. I just hate to be on the edge of our seat here waiting for a presentation that's probably going to happen anyway, just to take some of the stress out of all of this. I just don't understand why we can't do that. So that would be my motion to extend the four-month extension.
Councilmember Ball.
So before I commit to anything, I just want to make a couple of quick points here. I'll start with it very simple. When I was a kid here, we used to drive from Lompoke to Los Angeles all the time. Went to private church school, so it was only a handful of us, but we always went to the Science Museum in Los Angeles. And if we had enough time left in the day, we'd stumble over to the Natural History Museum. But that was kind of boring, so it was always about science. It's about touching things, seeing things shake and learning about how an earthquake happens and just science. So there's a big part of me that embraces, which at the moment is a fantasy, let's be honest. This is pie in the sky until it happens, until it comes to fruition, maybe. So I would love to see this happen, but as a leader in Lompoke, we also have a responsibility to hold people's feet to the fire to some extent when they do make an agreement with the city. That said, we can be flexible, but I want to remind everyone here that, look, I know COVID showed up. We're all survivors of that. We're here. But we're talking about extending this for not the second time, but the sixth or seventh time. So my biggest question is not whether or not this would be amazing, whether or not the kids would thrive and whether or not families would enjoy this. That is not the question at all. There has to be a place where we as a city are convinced beyond a reasonable doubt that this is absolutely viable and feasible. And opinions and heartfelt, passionate comments are one thing, but bringing this to fruition, as everyone on the team knows, is going to be a mountainous. I don't even know how to describe it. This is going to be a tremendous project to see any part of this come to fruition. So my biggest question, before I commit to anything, is if we were to provide a four-month extension and with all of this data and all of this good news, people should be lining up to invest in this project. I'm not seeing that yet, but I want to see that. So as a leader, I think it's fair to entertain an extension of this. But is it the 13th extension that we start to say, hey, enough's enough? It's a serious question, so I would put it back to the group. I'd like to know with some amount of seriousness, what does four months get us? Does that get us right back here again where we have another discussion about how great this could be and how important it is and how many really good people are on the team? But we have to move the goalpost again and the city has to be more flexible because what we originally agreed to doesn't work for you. These are all very legitimate questions and I'd love to hear some feedback.
I'm the designated respondent. Goes like this. So basically, first of all, the only extension we would request is enough time to negotiate with you. We don't need an extension to meet any of the precursor requirements, first. If you guys can negotiate a DDA in eight days, we'll do it in eight days, but we think it'll take three or four months. That's the first answer. Second, we can't plausibly go to the capital markets until we have a reasonable assurance that the land component of this deal is going to be on the table, because that's a significant driver of the return on investment. So until we are meaningfully down the road in negotiating the land deal, we don't have a good offer for an investor. That's the second point. Third, until we had the data we just shared with you, which we didn't have till last week, we didn't have any terra firma to stand on. Now we do, so that box has been checked. Fourth, we are unclear, and I guess I'll ask you, Mr. Malawi, does the MOU require a second presentation or is it a submittal?
The MOU requires the concept and feasibility study and experience design plan to be submitted to the city for review by the city council at a public meeting.
Okay, so.
So it needs to be submitted by the end of the year.
So here's our understanding. What an experience design plan is, is a 174-page document and it'll come with a fleshed-out version of what Steve presented tonight. We're not sure we can get back here on the 20th to re-present it all. And by the way, it won't have a lot more than you saw tonight presentationally. It'll have a lot more detail in the document. So we will submit it on or before the end of the month. We weren't planning, frankly, on another presentation of it and I don't think it's feasible, frankly, to come and do that again before the end of the year. So just to recap, there is a rational order to this. You don't, we will accept whatever length of time you think it requires for the city to meaningfully discuss the DDA requirement with us, but we can't go to the capital markets until we know we're done. We don't have to have it done, but we have to know we're down the road on it because it's a fundamental component of this deal to go out there with. So I hope that's some clarity.
Is it fair to, I'm just supposing, in this DDA development idea, is there a chance that when the city lets go of its rights to this land and makes an agreement that this space center never shows up, but a hotel does?
No.
Okay. So again, I'm very open to extending this conversation, but at some point, there has to be a hard cutoff where you say, look, I, we can't keep leading Lompoke on anymore because this is the end, or we're definitely going to make strides to making this happen.
Yeah, I think there's two gating factors on that. One is the deed restrictions on the use of this land are real tight. We either have to do what we've said we're going to do, or you don't ever have to make the deal first. So you could go to someone else and authorize them to build a hotel perhaps, but in our view, your own deed restrictions preclude that. So no, that's not going to happen. What really happens, I think, is were we to get down the road on a DDA and one of two things happened, either we can't make a deal, then you still have your land and we go away and we have all this sunk cost. Or we do go down the road on a DDA, we enter the DDA process we agree on and can't raise the money, in which case you still have your land. So you, my view would be, I don't think in any case you're fundamentally any worse off than you are right here, right now, with a fallow piece of land.
Last question. What's the difference between four and six months on this, in this discussion?
I have no idea.
Is there any benefit from the city side to going longer than four months on an extension?
I'd ask Mr. Malawi that question. He's done this before.
I thought that four months would be a reasonable period of time for us to try to get, make progress on the DDA. And if we do, then we will come back for another extension of the MOU within four months' time. I think six months might be a little bit too long.
Okay, that's all I got.
Councilmember Starbuck.
I'll second the motion.
All right, so the motion on the table is to give them a four-month extension to do exactly what? What's in the staff recommendation and start negotiation or an extension to deliver the plan and come back and make a presentation and then decide to enter into the DDA negotiation?
I'm going to refer to the city attorney, because I respect you, Jeff, and I want to make sure you can help me with this so that we can lay it out correctly, because I think the four-month, but I want to stay within your purview.
Sure. If there's a four-month extension, then we will just keep going down the line on the requirements of the MOU and they'll just have four more months to comply with all of it. So that would be meeting the fundraising requirement and getting confirmation that they've done that. Also getting the final official experience design plan and concept feasibility study. We'll bring that to the city council for review at a public meeting. And then we will start negotiating the disposition and development agreement and see how far we get in four months' time.
That's my motion.
Okay, I just needed clarity as to what exactly.
No, 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 it's all good. We're good.
We were moving forward on for four months.
Thank you, Jeff, okay.
Do you still continue that second?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Staff has a question.
I just want to confirm the final date would be April 18th, 2023. It's the second meeting of April of 2023.
Would that be considered the four-month extension, Jeff?
Well, that'd be the council meeting where we'd have to come back for another extension, but the final, the date of expiration would be May 1st, 2023. Does that make sense?
And so it's okay to then require that the April 18th meeting is when you will receive your presentation?
No, I'd like to have the presentation in January if possible, because we need to evaluate that 174 pages and the consultant's information and then provide direction as to whether or not to continue the negotiation, because those two things are key on whether we actually move forward on the negotiation. We're saying we intend to as long as those two documents are fully completed and vetted and we've had a chance to analyze them. So it's a combination of moving things. So we need to have a presentation on the 17th, whether it's by the organization or by our staff, however, they want to work that out, that the document comes back to us, is presented to us in public. We have a discussion, that we've looked at the consultant's final evaluation of the financials and then at that point be able to say confidently that moving forward on a DDA is the right way to go.
And you're talking about January 17th?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, okay.
Just so that you remember, January 17th is also the date that you're getting a presentation about animal services.
So we have our two big agenda items.
Okay.
Thank you. January's going to be exciting. All right. You good? No? I asked if you're good and you said no.
I said it off the mic, though.
Yeah, but so, but you're good, is what you're supposed to say.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's vote. That passes for 01 and abstention. If Gilda is still in the building, I welcome her back. I have a feeling that she went home. She said she most likely would not stick around. So I will give her a bit of time to see if she is available and returns to the dais. But given she has not rushed into the room or jumped out of her car, if she was waiting in it and got dinner and didn't bring us any, we'll move on to written communications. Did we have any written communication on any item we haven't already discussed or asked about?
No, ma'am, nothing.
Okay, thank you. This is your final two minutes for oral communication on a city matter. The number to call is 805-875-8201. If you'd like to speak and you're in the room, you have two minutes and you're welcome to come to the podium or you may call in. Absolutely, you have two minutes.
Yeah, I'd like to recommend that we have a dancing floor in front of the stage because there's grass and, you know, it's not good for dancing. And people, you know, they might want to dance instead of just stand there and listen to the band.
Can I ask the room to keep it down so we can actually hear the speakers till we're adjourned? Thanks so much. Thanks, that's, we'll definitely pass that on to staff. All right, seeing no one call in and no one else rise, we'll bring it back to council for comments and meeting reports and we'll start with you, Mr. Vega.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Since Councilmember Cordova is here, I assume she has nothing to report. And Councilmember Starbuck?
Just like to thank the public for participating in the parade and I have no reports.
Thank you. Councilmember Ball?
Councilmember Starbuck stole my thunder there. Just kidding. Three quick things. Mayor was out of town. Thank you for the opportunity to step in and kind of set off the basket, the local recreation basketball season kickoff. That was really awesome. About 300-plus kids in one room getting ready to play basketball. So big shout out to our recreation department. That's a lot of management and planning, so thank you to all of those who put it together. I also attended the Savvy, the healthcare, they had a holiday luncheon at the Hilton, little fundraiser event. I got to introduce Dr. Norristonny. They're doing some really great work, if you haven't heard of them. Look into that. And yes, just thank you, thank you, thank you to everyone who showed up on an almost rainy day for a wonderful, wonderful Christmas parade. It was great to see a lot of familiar faces and lots of new ones and seems like a lot of people had fun. So that's great. Thank you all.
As Mr. Ball mentioned, I was out of town. I was in DC on the city's behalf. We are members of the Northern California Power Agency and we did a legislative trip to talk with our federal legislators about energy issues that we're having with some of our facilities and to make sure that they're aware and can work on solving them at the federal level, because some of the federal permitting issues are part of the problem. There were many more Northern California Power Agency meetings this month that I also attended. And I attend regularly the elected leaders forum on homelessness and have been appointed the vice chair for 2023. Vandenberg Space Force Base had another change of command, but this was for their 377th airbase wing that converted to a test and evaluation group. So they had a change of command and an activation, which I was glad to attend. Santa Barbara County Area Government meetings, attended those. Planning Commission, it's my rotation this month, so I've gotten to see our housing element presentation twice now. The old CC grant that we approved, we had a presentation to all of the steering committee by our staff and the grantees that are working on it. And that was very interesting and we have a lot of potential in partnering to provide support to the base so they can maintain focus on mission critical. We are a small city, so it'd be a good idea for us to help them run a small city. Thank you to the organizers of the Veterans Day Ceremony. I did attend that. They had a luncheon on site. It was lovely to be able to hang out with those that have served our country and really share the afternoon with them. Shop Small, I want to thank the chamber for putting that on. It was awesome this year. The weather was great. Everybody was out. They added an afternoon event where we cut the ribbon on Route 1's mobile market. Follow them on social media. They are providing a local food, mobile food market in town, especially to the low-income neighborhoods, but they are partnering with our Charlotte's Web library. And so where the library goes, they're going with them. And so follow them to see what their schedule is and everybody can shop at it. And last but not least, Toys for Tots is going on. They're still collecting. They will be distributing on December 17th. So if you haven't yet given a gift, please do. This is going to be a difficult year for a lot of families. And I just want to thank all of those that have participated in collecting those toys for doing so. And as many others have said, the Christmas parade, so glad we went off with it anyway despite the threat of rain, because so many other communities canceled theirs and are not rescheduling, so it was awesome. And we had 20 more entries than we had the year before, so it was great turnout. For those of you that have been calling and asking about the Central Avenue signs, the monument sign there at the strip mall there at Walmart that for over a year was in horrible condition, has been replaced. It is awesome to take a look at. And we want to welcome Big Lots to the community. They have opened and they have a ribbon cutting on Saturday, so we appreciate their investment in our community. All right, we will adjourn the Lompoke City Council meeting until the next regular meeting at 6:30 PM on December 20th, 2022. Thank you.